Six weeks away, seven weeks away.
Make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
So we got John Yuhan, no, John Yuhan, with support with Director Riordan. Any discussion, any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries now. Okay, at this time we'll have visitor input. We had some people that wanted to come and speak tonight. One, the first lady that signed up, I decided that she didn't want to come. And the second lady, or a bunch of people, or a few people. It's Terry Radke. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just so you know that it's three minutes, okay?
Yeah, I'll try, so I'm going to talk really fast, I'm sorry.
Right, alright.
My name is Terry Radke, and I'm a taxpayer here. Our kids went to Elkhilbert Schools when they were grown up. I'm here to talk about my concerns and disagreement with the critical race theory, Trojan horse named diversity, equity, and inclusion that's being pushed into our schools. But I'd like to ask you, without a show of hands, how many of you had the thought run through your head right then that she has a problem with it because she's white? At least one person in this room, I'm sure, had that thought. Well, five to 10 years ago, you would have never looked at someone's color and made a biased judgment like that. What changed? Why? You've been slowly indoctrinated and told repeatedly that we're a racist country and that whites are systemically racist, whether they know it or not. It's a psychological operation. It's actually a psyop. After World War II, a social psychologist, Solomon Ash, did an experiment to try to figure out what caused the conformity that was required for Nazi Germany to gain control. He found evidence that humans will accept ideas of others around them even if those ideas are false. How did he do it? He did the Ash Line Study. He took groups of 12 students and told them that they were taking a vision test. Ahead of time, he took 11 of them privately and told them to answer wrong intentionally. And then he brought the 12 student in, who was his subject. And he had all 12 look at a series of lines similar to this, and he was going to ask them questions about the measurements. Which ones are the same, which ones were longer? And the 11 always answered wrong, right? So then he brought in the one student, and he found that his subjects, the one, often changed his answer when he heard the group of 11 give a different response. The results were, he had three results. The subject's perception was distorted due to the stress of group pressure. Number two, their judgment was distorted. They assumed their answers were wrong after seeing the rest of the group answer differently, so they changed their answer. And then third, their actions were distorted. They suppressed their opinions and intentionally lied when it was their time to answer. Now, I share this because I believe this concept of diversity, equity, and inclusion is using peer and group pressure on students and teachers to cause people to go against their conscience and reality and to accept what isn't true. Whether it be thoughts on race, biology, gender, country, history, our families, teachers aren't speaking up because they are afraid of being disciplined, canceled, and bullied if they don't cave to this group think. We are compelling people to speak and embrace and celebrate ideas that go against their conscience and their reality. That can't be three minutes.
It was. It was three minutes.
I've practiced this.
Did you?
Do you mind giving me a couple minutes?
Go ahead.
It's not a 15-minuter, okay? And I am talking as fast as I can for you. Alright, I come from a mixed family. My son is white, he's married to a black woman, our grandchildren look black. Our kindergarten, our grandson has very dark skin, he looks black. And he's grown up where color was never an issue. He never even noticed it, till one day last year, he came home traumatized. His perception had changed. He came home, found his dad, and was just hysterically bawling. He said, "I don't want you to be white anymore because my teachers sit back in the day that white people were mean to black people and they wouldn't let them sit with them on the bus." He was messed up. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is racist, and it's intentionally focused on and divides people by race and other categories. As our academics are plummeting and the mental health of our children has never been so dangerously fragile, suicide, depression, anxiety, gender dysphoria, confusion, we need to stop this dangerous ideology that's causing instability. It's contrary to what Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream of a country where we don't judge a person by the color of their skin but by his character. DEI's goal is to dismantle that dream and make you, put you into categories and make you group think. You will not be equal. Equity and equality are different. I've been telling you guys that for three years. It is different. Our Constitution guarantees equality under law for every single person regardless of their views, their opinions, their color of their skin, whatever. They are equal. Equity claims to be just and fair. Who's their arbitrator of that? Who decides what's just and fair? Our Constitution has protections of equality for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Also, handout, read it or not, I don't care, but it's a real light read. That kind of explains what's going on.
Thank you.
Up next is Mr. Walton. He wants to speak to Policy 206.
John Walton, have a glass. Good evening.
Good evening.
I almost had a question answered last meeting. Question was, I'll paraphrase, who is going to decide if there's more than 10, who does not get to speak? And the almost answer I got from Tim was, "We don't know at this time," and from Randy was, "We haven't put in on that policy." Well, if you don't have all the information you need to make a decision, why are you trying to make a decision? Huh? As far as I'm concerned, the answer to that question should be in the terms of that contract. And I believe that is a contract, that form. And the way it's worded in your new incantation and the new revisions you want to make, you have to fill out the form, otherwise you don't get to speak. Isn't that right? And that's the way it's worded. Don't go there. Now, there's some conflicting items in this new revision. From your purpose for 206, it says, "The school board recognizes the value of participation in deliberations and decisions on school district matters with opportunity for expression of all participants' respective views." And in your general statement of policy, "In order to facilitate free discussion by all interested parties." Yet your new mantra is, "Pen only." Those two things don't jive. They simply don't. And especially with what I recall from the Policy Committee where that was discussed, it was done so because you don't like long meetings. Well, shorten them up. You can find a way. It's not that difficult. Everybody gets a right to speak. Now, in this form, the original form had a purpose. If you wanted to speak on a non-agenda item, you filled out the form, right? But that was weaponized. I mentioned that at a Policy Committee meeting, because not long after that form came into its use, I was denied the right to speak because I requested to speak on an agenda item, and I was told, "No, I couldn't because I didn't fill out the form." Well, I didn't agree with that contract either. And as far as I'm concerned, the terms to that contract, which are the policy specified in 206, the terms to that were violated. That's a breach, and that policy is null and void currently.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
I have a little bit more.
So if you go past three minutes for one person, you're going to have to do it for everybody. That's why we're trying to specific about three minutes.
There's another item in here. I think you got, "The school board reserves the right to require designation of one or more representatives, blah, blah, blah." What right do you have to do that? Look at the signature on my email. I speak for myself only. I would never try to speak for anybody else. And you don't have the right to impose that on anyone. And I caution anybody that tries to speak for me, because that's not going to happen. Okay? Now, one other thing. It says here, "Personal attacks by anyone addressing the school board are unacceptable." I mentioned New York Times versus Sullivan at one meeting. We could have been a lot nastier, and I think the worst we ever got was the meeting where you punished Pollyann about due process. And our anger and our vocalness was warranted for that. You may recall, America fought a revolution over what is the Bill of Attainment.
Please stay on topic of 206, please.
The same thing. Oh, one last thing. "The school board reserves the right to oppose such other limitations and restrictions as necessary to provide an orderly and efficient, fair opportunity for those to be present." There again, your rights. I don't see a lot of what the public's rights are. And as far as that statement goes, I think that's just get out of Boo Boo Free Garden.
Thank you, Tom. Up next is Jerry Williams.
Gerald Williams, Virginia, Minnesota. This will be short, because I didn't have time to even go through the thing, but I am learning. You're forcing me to learn how to get on a computer, send an email, and carbon copy it to everybody, because I was denied once before when I sent it to Tom, and I didn't appreciate that, but I didn't carbon copy it to everybody, so I got no recourse that way. I would like to see, I don't know what the policy is, I can walk into a city council meeting in Virginia and sign up to speak that night. There are issues that come up, that become, come to our attention, maybe four hours before this meeting, and the day before, I have to have it signed in or send an email. I don't carry my computer. I might be able to do it on my phone, but I'm not computer savvy. I'm not a technologist. I didn't fall off the roof today. I got here, I did take a shower, so I didn't stink. Anyway, I appreciate this input from the public. Whether you like what we say or not, doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. We pay taxes. I don't have kids in this school district. I have a daughter that had a child in this district, she pulled them because of the policies that were implemented here. Do I want to see that happen again? You want to kill this school? Just keep pissing people off. You want to take people and know what your other kids write out of this thing? Thank you.
Thank you. We had one more speaker. Did she nod? We had one more speaker. She didn't show, huh? Okay. That's unfortunate. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Support by Director Riordan.
I'd like to pull number three and number four for discussion, please.
Number three and number four. So it'd be 4.3 and 4.4, correct?
Right.
Discussion, okay. So we got a motion by Director Lotiger, supported by Director Riordan, in regards to the consent agenda with removal of 4.3 and 4.4. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Polly, 4.3.
Yeah, the payment of the bills, I guess I didn't realize this till lately, but the payment of the bills, it really should be an agenda item, a separate item, because it is a resolution. We have to have the, you know, the resolution and a roll call vote. Kind of used to do it that way, but I don't know, somehow it got shoved under this consent agenda. So I think that needs to be an agenda line item itself. I do think that one of our policies, I don't know if it's one we're going to pass tonight, does have, does have it listed as a separate agenda item. And that's about the payment of the bills. Then, just related to that, I think I'd like to see reinstated on the payment of bills. I think it just gives our expenditures, but I think we used to have, well, at least Elkhilbert used to have some more information of what our balances were.
General fund.
Remember that?
Yep, yep.
So our balances, not just our total disbursements. And then we also had the balances of each of our depositories. So if we have three banks, and then we have some other depository for some other purposes, and put those balances on, I'd like to see that reinstated.
Okay.
Just for more information. I don't know if I need to make that into a motion to change that, to add that additional information. But I will.
I would support that.
So you got a motion by Director Sarkin, support by Director Wesby, to add payment of the bills to include, like, the general balance, deposits in this general balance of each bank that we participate with.
It's a general fund balance, I believe it was, and then it was added a little bit later, the fund balances of all of our depositories.
So we would just put that?
Right at the end.
We just, we'd put it at the end to approve it? Or would you just put it into the packet? What are?
Into the packet, but it's at the last page. It always used to be on the last page.
I just know.
Just the disbursements and payroll.
Is that something that we need to have? I mean, we have a treasurer, we have a budget and finance committee. Is that something that we need to have separate from the consent agenda? Is that what you're saying?
We have to. I'm saying we should, because it's a resolution. It says right here, "Resolution adopted," and it was, a motion was made, it was seconded. It's one of those roll call resolutions. We always used to do it that way, but I don't know how and when it got into the consent agenda. Maybe when we were merging and everything. I'm just thinking formally, it needs to be a roll call vote separately.
And I don't know if it needs to be a roll call vote.
I just remembered, I just remembered the treasurer being me, or Tom, or Tom, that he would just, the treasurer's report would read, and then we'd just do the deposits of each bank and the balances of each bank. And that would be it, then it would be like, and then that would be it, and it would be like, I still move that the board approved the treasurer's report. And it was like voted by?
Spencer's here, can I mean?
Yeah. Can you add to that, Spencer?
Whenever you would like added to it, I can.
I mean, so.
And a separate agenda item. Be careful.
I mean, I think I would do it, if you were going to add to that, I mean, would it be just a? I mean, it would be like?
Just add a treasurer's report to the agenda?
Yeah, that's what we used to have.
Right, but it was in the beginning, right in the beginning.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, well, this.
Actually, now that you say that, I do recall, I think when Tom was the treasurer, I think there was a treasurer's report on the agenda.
Chipper was a treasurer also.
I was a treasurer.
It was before Tom even. It was just like in perpetuity for that.
Yeah, it wasn't here before Tom.
And again, the last page did, does say, "Motion, a second, the resolution was adopted." So I mean, just.
What page are you on?
Last page of the, of the, of the payment of the bills. Says it's a resolution. It's just kind of a housekeeping thing. It's no big thing, you know, as far as, just like I say, it occurred to me and I noticed it, and.
I mean, like I said, I, now that you mention, or somebody mentioned the treasurer's report, I do remember Tom.
So Tom would give the treasurer's report?
He would give a treasure.
Okay, so I'm the treasurer?
He would have to give the treasurer's report.
Just have to read the numbers, but, okay.
Just read the balance.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
For the first week of, for the first week of, you don't like the?
Just get a sample.
Last two weeks. It would tell you that you dispersed this much, okay? And, I mean, but, I mean, we used to go line item, food service, all this other stuff.
Don't have to do that, just in general.
Total expenditures, total deposits.
Put something together for the next board meeting.
Yeah.
And then if you want to change from that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Perfect, Spencer.
Okay, so, we can.
So we're adding a treasurer's report and taking bills out of the consent agenda? Doing a?
We'll talk about it, but that's, that's on the table.
Yeah, okay. It's just a separate item. Right?
So I don't know what everybody feels, but, you know, I mean, it's, we can give it, we can give it a shot. I mean.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, so, you got a motion by Director Sarkin, support by Director Wesby, all in favor of adding a treasurer's report for payment of the bills, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Aye. Yeah, motion passes unanimously. And all opposes, you oppose, right? 6-1.
Five, one.
6-1.
6-1, sorry.
Bad math.
I'm not the treasurer.
So, item five, is considered approved.
We go to 4-4.
About the commercial broker that we've got a resolution from, even though?
People from the consent agenda. 4-4.
Mm-hmm.
4-4.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right. It's just, I would like more information about, I have no idea, I did a little looking today of what the wait advisor, what the program is. Have we had it before? Why do we need it? What's its content? I just would like to know a little bit more about this wait program. Way number one.
I can help a little bit, but that members of the board, this is a position, it is new, and so that's why it's coming to you. And the purpose, this is an individual who comes and talks to her kids, I think it's half a day, one day a week, and this person, like a counselor coming in, like a social worker coming in. This individual does work with individuals, this is with parents knowing about it. I'd equate it to, we have adapt counselors who come into the building, we give them space, and then they work with individual kids on a variety of different topics. So this individual comes into the building, this is high school, we're only talking high school here, and works with some individual kids, does work with some groups of kids in talking to the principals. The principals are telling me this person is effective, the kids like meeting with this individual, and they're asking you to continue it. They want to keep it going, but we typically bring some stuff like this before the school board, so that's why it's before you.
So it's already happening, though? I'm confused by that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this individual has worked with some kids already, yes. And that's not that unusual, because we've had adapt individuals come into the building before the board has approved the final contract for the year.
And do parents, they approve then if their child, so it's not, it's not like parent, you have to have parental approval to see this person?
If a parent says, "No, I don't want my child doing this," then we don't do it.
Okay.
And is this held during school hours?
Correct. Yes, it is held during, so the student would have to voluntarily come to see this individual, yep.
And they get, like, get out of class for that period of time?
Just like they get out of class to see a counselor, or go in the office, or some other, see a social worker, something like that, yep.
And how long have we had this going?
This would be, I believe the high school principals would like, just for, at least for the rest of the school year, see how it goes.
I mean, but how long have we already had it before?
I believe.
December 12th. December 12th?
Yep.
Okay, so.
Not long.
We're a little behind the, behind the timing here. When I looked it up today, to find out a little bit more about it, it is about diversity, inclusion, and equity. That's what the description was. And so.
It is.
That could be, is that something this board supports?
I support any, I support anything that supports kids.
Well.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll support.
Because members of the board, the reality is, we have had situations where our kids have said and done things that we don't want them to do. We want them to treat others with honesty and dignity and respect. That has nothing to do with your skin color, but we want our kids to act that way towards all people. We have had some situations that have not gone the way we want our students to be acting. We need to do something appropriately to help our kids make good decisions when they're talking or saying or working with other people. So, yes, specifically, this individual has come in and worked with certain kids so that they can work through certain situations that they are experiencing. I believe this is an important thing to do and part of what we do as schools.
Well, you know, I think we all want what's best for kids, and we all want to help kids become better people, help them grow into, you know, good adults and everything, but this particular area is very politically charged. It's very political. There, you know, it's one of the hot topics, hot buttons, and so it's not really neutral. It's not a neutral thing. The neutral thing is, we want to help kids. Yes, we do. Okay, so, but this is not a neutral area, and that's what I want to avoid.
In your opinion?
In my opinion, yes. That's fine. It's my opinion.
Yeah, I really don't know much about it, so it's hard for me, like, I don't know what Ms. Owens' credentials, like, I don't really know much about it, so it's hard to approve something that I don't know much about yet, I guess.
I would want to know more content.
I mean, that could be said about every one of those positions underneath it. You don't know the credentials of any of?
I've heard of a para educator, I know what that is, I know what a playground lunch aid is.
But the point, I'm just making that point, I mean, when we approve positions, they're making a recommendation for us to approve, and we don't always know, you know, and I appreciate the ask, but we don't always know exactly what, you know, all the details are for each person that's hired. I mean, the hiring committee that looks at their resume, they get that information, and our job is to approve or not approve.
Well, this is someone acting as a counselor, so I'm just kind of wondering if it is a counselor, or what kind of person that are just, you know?
It's a counselor. It's, that's probably the easiest way in a timeframe, it's a counselor/social worker-type individual who comes in.
For me, it's not the, it's not the person, it's the definition of the position that is concerning to me.
And the content, content of what that counseling would be, other than something that's neutral and non-controversial, that's my concern.
I think the thing that we all forget here, yes, it's politically charged, but we're not bringing it in to politically charge our students, we're bringing it in because it's, there's a need for it.
There might be a need for counseling, but again, it, there's.
That's all, that.
It's an opinion, and we all have our own opinions.
I made the motion.
Yeah, and I supported it. So, no further discussion, all in.
But one other piece of discussion is, I know this was in December, but sometimes things we vote on after the fact, and it's happened historically sometimes, okay? And I think we need to be more careful about not, not putting the cart before the horse and not approving something or starting something before the board approves it and has a discussion on it. When I looked on the, I don't know, was it Minnesota School Job Site 2, this was posted three days ago, and this afternoon, when I went back to look, it was, it was gone, as if it were a foregone conclusion. So the listing is no longer there, it was only there for three days. I have no idea how many people might have, might have applied for three days, I don't know if there was a, whatever, those are, those are side things.
And members of the school board, let me answer that question, because you, as a school board, have authorized me, as your superintendent, to hire personnel as need to be in the real time, in the real moment. We hire lots of people on a short-term basis because we have to do it. We need a secretary, we need another para, and then they come before the board. This is a situation where we needed to do something, we needed to bring someone in. I made the decision to bring this person in, short-term, because you gave me the authorization, but we still bring these all back to the school board. me the authorization, but we still bring these all back to the school board for the full discussion here, we have a need for this.
Okay, so, you know, I had, I didn't ask it this past year, but I asked it in a previous year about when we gave the superintendent the authority, and I asked, is this on a casual basis, and I was told, yes, not for a permanent position, I don't care if it's even for a year, my impression and your answer was, is that we need a bus driver, and we got to have one right now, or we need some maintenance, or we need some extra help, somebody sick, that was the answer I got, but this is different, this is, even if it's for one year, it's, it's a position, and to me, that was different to give you that authority because, again, that's, I think, something we could have waited for.
We, we give.
Till it comes.
Give him authority to hire people that are needed in our school district.
Well, then that, then I would not have supported.
And if we are against it as a school board, we will find out in a few minutes, and that person won't be here, and if we approve it, that person will still be here, and so.
Right, so I think, I needed a definition of just what authority that is, for casual, for emergency situations, or for situations that become a permanent job, so, that's all I have.
I just wanted more clarification, I guess, what the, stands for, the WA1T.
Members of the board, regardless of what you say tonight, I will bring additional information for you after the school meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So all in favor of approving four point four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Well, it's a four three vote.
Four three.
Okay, moving on.
Are we going to pay the bills? We have to pay the bills?
Yeah, we do, I thought we did, I thought we did that.
Nope.
I thought it was a six one. A six one vote.
No, that, that six one was for pulling it out, putting it out as a singular.
You know what, we can just consent agenda today because it is, but starting the next meeting, have it separate, and that's fine.
Okay, so four point three, can I get a motion to pay the bills?
Rieden, support.
Support by Rieden, I mean, move by Rieden, support by Director Yohan, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item five, consider approval of work agreements for the individuals, I would ask the board if we can do five point one through five point thirteen, five point one three as a group.
I'd make that motion.
Motion. Motion by Director Yohan, support by Director Lotiger, any discussion?
Okay, just, I, I'm not quite sure what happened between our working session and tonight, as far as these contracts and employees go, what, what happened?
I think the discussion at our working session was that these individuals signed their contract, and everybody seemed to be okay since they signed their contract, but there was one individual that had not signed their contract, so that's why we were having that separate and having a discussion, which, I, it's kind of off-topic at the moment, I guess, but I, I was under the impression that at that working session, we were going to schedule a negotiations committee to have a discussion with Josh Lampa, who's the only person that did not sign the contract, I thought it was going to the negotiations committee, or, or at least a, a working session with.
That's what's.
The whole group, and not a discussion here, because, you know, I, I still consider myself new on the board, even though this is, I'm starting my seventh year, and I just don't, I don't, I, I've never had that happen before, where we've had that negotiations discussion at a regular meeting, and I, I, I'm, I feel like it's awkward, it's uncomfortable, and I think that it should actually go to the negotiations committee for discussion.
And I, and I do believe that the consensus of the board, not the consensus, but the majority of the board at the working session, believe that, that because they signed them, we were just gonna.
Move forward.
Move forward and approve them.
Well.
I do believe.
At the work, go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, I just do believe that Director Westby, and of course, Director Calvert-Dahl mentioned that, you know, when you negotiate, that you don't get to come back, and, you know, you had stated that, that's not how the real world works.
Right.
Okay.
I almost had a different opinion, but I'm, I'm still confused as to, when some of the people came at the working session and spoke, some of them came, and so, did that mean that between that working session and another board meeting, that any of the others that didn't speak would still have a chance to, quote, negotiate and/or come before the board with their.
Send their contract.
The way that I look at it is, I mean, can Ed Minnesota, or ask me, come back and have a conversation with us then, you know, they, they did sign their contract.
The one thing that I thought of after the meeting, when I got home, was, I'm sorry, Brandy.
That's.
Is, the contract isn't, it, it, what, what would have happened if we would have said, we don't agree with the contract, it would be just one-sided sign, right, and then we'd be back at the drawing board.
Well, and like I.
We'd need two people to sign.
Well, like I explained at the, at the last, at the working session, I mean, and not saying one was right and one was wrong, or whatever, again, we need to figure out for Rock Ridge how we want to do it, but, Eglis Gilbert, when I was on the negotiations committee, I think it was probably about three years ago, we did have back and forth communications, so they'd come to us, present what they'd like, we'd take a look at it, we'd have discussion, we'd go back to them, and go back and forth and make negotiations, and I know what you, you know, you're, I get that, too, I do get that, too, I, I don't know, and my understanding is Virginia did not do it that way, Virginia, for the Atwell employees, they brought what they wanted, and then the, the people on the negotiations committee looked at it, and then said, this is what we're offering, it, you know, the whole contract, you know, Atwell employee thing, so, I guess the way I look at it is, we're gonna have to, I feel like since they signed it, we, we should be approving it, it puts everybody in limbo if we don't, I know there was a couple people that afterwards said that they wanted to talk about it, but, as a board, as the Rock Ridge School District, if we want to do it differently, as far as negotiations with Atwell employees, then we need to put that on the agenda and have a discussion about that, but, you know, to kind of go back on everything that was already done, and all the conversations that were already had for negotiations, I feel like it's, again, wiping out the work of that committee, so, that's, that's how I feel about it, again, like I said, going forward, we can make a decision as the Rock Ridge Board of Seven, what we'd like to do, and have a working session and discussion, or, or put it on the agenda, or whatever.
Yes, I, I think we should do that, for sure.
If, we can, we can do that, but.
So what was the, when, when the certain people talked at the working session, what did that mean to us then? And, question one, question two is, between the working session and tonight's meeting, with these on the agenda, did those people have a chance for any more input?
Why do they need input? Why don't they talk? If they don't get it, if they sign their, if they're okay with their contract, why would they need more input?
Because we heard at the working session that there, there wasn't.
We're the employer.
Right.
You know, I went to negotiate my contract, my, my wage, three and a half years ago with my job, and I didn't get it, so I quit, and I got a different job.
Okay.
And I got, if I'd have stayed for what I wanted there, I would have had a way worse job than I have now, so, I mean, it's, you say, we need two signatures to consummate a contract, we're the employer, they signed theirs, that's what we offered them, so it doesn't, the only thing they could negotiate more is for more money, it doesn't make any sense, we're the employer.
The only thing I want to say about that is that they came and they said, and I said in the meetings, there was no negotiating, they said, here's what I want, we've got papers, here's what I want, and the board committee just said, here's what you're gonna get.
That's not true, some people did say that they didn't get negotiation, Josh said he did not.
No, I was at that meeting.
Oh, well, somebody, whoever talked said that they did have the back and forth.
Whatever, whatever, but it, it didn't, it was like a take it or leave it thing, there was no negotiating, five minutes, I was there, I didn't hear anything of, well, you know, might you consider this, or would you be willing to do that, that's negotiating, so there, that's what they said when they came to the working session, so.
So we have a motion by.
John, second by Brandy.
Second by Director Lotiger. More discussion?
One more thing, I just think that in Spencer's contract, there's something about the number of days and the number of hours, and I just think we, we can pass this, but we need to go back, because I don't think the number of days matches the actual number of days, if we want it that way, that's fine, forty hours a week, he probably puts in way more than forty hours, but I don't think the 261 days works out, Spencer does it, I'm thinking.
I'm pretty sure my contract states hours.
It states hours, and it states days, 261, but I think it's really like 209 days when you take out, you take out.
I think my contract states hours, but you can pull it, you can pull it again, I don't really care, I was offered this contract, I didn't negotiate because I didn't want to, so I was offered this by, and now it's.
Twenty third.
One third.
And you can pull it again.
Well, I don't, I don't mean to pull it, but I just think it needs, it needs to be accurate, I don't think it's accurate, the number of days, so.
You don't think so, or you know so?
Let's just, yeah, but.
All right.
The, the reason, the reason that I don't think the number of days is accurate, it's 261 workdays, forty hours a week, or more, but if, if, if you're here four days a week, and one day at Ely, that doesn't work out to 261 days.
Hours, you said, right?
Under nine.
It's hours, right?
You have hours and days.
It must say workdays on there.
Oh.
So if, you know, if you want to take it out or change it, just.
What was that contract dated?
Um, this is an old one, I don't.
Twenty-two to twenty-four.
This is the one that's.
From July, it'll work here, it's July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2024.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't. So I just want the numbers to be accurate.
Okay.
So should we pull it to double-check the numbers?
I would, I would tell Noel, or, to make those corrections, work with Spencer to make those corrections, to make it accurate, so the contract does read hours.
Yeah, members of the board, I'm not worried about it, everybody knows one day equals eight hours, it's the accepted work employment range, so to me, one day is eight hours, that is very easy for us to figure out.
But we have, we have working days in there, we have 261 working days, Noel.
Yes, and each one of those 261 days equals eight hours of work, that's how it works with almost all of your employees.
Doesn't work out, that's my input.
Okay, so no more discussion being had, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Six one vote, okay.
Batch, right?
Was that, yes, that is for the whole group, okay, and now we'll get to number six, input from Josh Lampa, if he chooses to speak.
I, come on up, but I, I do, I do feel like this is an awkward position, not only for the board, I feel like it's an awkward position for Josh, he's already been here, you know, he's talked to the board once, kind of told us what his thoughts were, so I do feel like it should go to the negotiation committee, and if it does end up that you come here, and just kind of stand there and smile for a little bit, and I make the recommendation, it goes to negotiations committee, I'm sorry that you had to leave home and come here and leave after literally one minute, but.
I agree with Brandy.
I do think it should.
Yeah, because we, that's what we talked about at the, you know, working session.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah, so we have a motion for, for Mr. Lampa's contract to be brought back to the negotiating committee, is that your recommendation, or that's your, that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, so your motion by Director Lotiger, support by, support by Director Rieden.
Is that okay, we can talk to the negotiating committee, and then hopefully you guys can come to an agreement, and we can.
Yeah.
Bring it back to the full board, we know when the. We have made the committee, and he's been.
Yeah, we're, we're almost there.
I'm the problem, I'm sorry.
Reminds me of that song.
Okay, so, I guess, I guess I really.
Very soon.
I guess I really don't want no discussion on this.
The only discussion I thought of is, unless you want to speak tonight, or is that, that's okay with you?
I'll speak to you guys at the working session, I don't really have much else to say than that, I just want a fair chance to negotiate the contract.
All right.
Got your email, too, today, that was good?
Yeah, thank you.
Couldn't open it, I'm still working on, by my computer skills.
Send it in a different format, if you like.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Can you fax it to him?
Yeah, yeah.
Fax it to me, no virus.
Yeah, working on that.
Bye, everybody.
We'll, we'll get going on it, because I know it's stressful when, when people don't have a contract signed, and.
And that additional information was very helpful, put things into perspective.
So we got a motion by Director Lotiger, support by Director, and all those in favor signify by saying aye that this is going back to the negotiating committee for further discussion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, seven zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Report, seven point one, additional information for the monitor's report, Spencer.
Yeah, so there's a couple of questions, I wasn't here at the last board meeting, I think there's three questions, I did some research for you all, one was, what was the $3 million transfer from the general fund to capital, this was the $3 million that the old Eglis Gilbert School District committed to the Laurentian project, so this was the last of the Laurentian project back in last fiscal year, so that's what that $3 million transfer is, it was for the committed fund to go into the Laurentian project, so that was that question, second one was, why did administrative expenses increase, so, there's a few things, the biggest one is the Positive Community Norms Grant went into a administrative code, so when you run those reports, it looks like it went into administration, so that was the PCN grant, that's $220,000, that's no added expense to the district because we have some revenue from that grant for that, so it looks like it's an added expense in that report, but we have the revenue coming in in the grant, other things, we had the Costa Group Consulting, and Fulcrum Vision's 3D Virtual Blueprint, that was the, I think it was from the old Gilbert School, is that right, that 3D thing, so there's a couple costs there that equaled about $27,000 in those two, we had increased advertising costs, publishing costs from this past year of about $94,000 over the previous year, and we had a little bit of cost with the principals, last year, we had those two principals that resigned right at the beginning of the school year, and we brought in the new principals, so there's a little bit of gap there when they both were here, so there's an added expenditure there, so those things, and that was about $13,000, it wasn't another month, so those are why that administrative expense looks higher in the last fiscal year over the previous one, and then the last question was, does the school board have to approve the auditors' report, and if so, when, I did spoke, speak to ARC to see what the actual rules are, they said it's a recommendation from MDE that the school board does approve it when the audit is presented to the school board, so you could have done it last time, if you'd like to accept it tonight, you could do it tonight, or if you'd like to put it on the next school board agenda, you certainly could do that, so that would be up to you.
Any more questions, any questions for Spencer?
I'll make a motion that we approve that tonight.
Approve the.
The audit?
The audit.
I would support that.
Motion by Director Rieden, support by Director Yohan for the audit report, any, any other question, or any discussion, none being had, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, seven point two, North Star's principals' report, I think it's Mr. Manny, you're the only one here.
Yes.
There's a whole list of celebrities that didn't make it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You can do the, the clicker, sorry. All right, perfect.
Evening.
Today I want to talk about an exciting thing going on in North Star, our project-based learning, and I want to give you a little research kind of behind it, one of the things we want to strive is to get our students to ask higher-level questions, and the staff all knows this, the students know it, we talk about Costa's House a lot with questions, and the bottom of the house is like gathering, those are like simple answers, like the capital of Minnesota, and the second level would be processing, and the top level we're trying to get is applying, so this is applying, asking the questions, so everyone. So every Wednesday on our early release days, our sixth grade had the students pick two things they're interested in to study. So this is from the first semester. So Mr. Kramer's did fantasy football. So within that, students had to draft their team, they were doing applied mathematics charts. And they would, they would use all their maths that they've learned and applied it to fantasy football. And then they would, you know, they would track it, just like a lot of us who play fantasy football. Then Mr. Negan and Mr. Lawrence's class, they started a newspaper. So in that class, they learned how to be editors, photographers. So if you go on Wednesday, you see students all over the building doing films, doing everything for a newspaper. Then in the Zanikars, they did animal adaption. So they were creating their own animals using the adoptions of other animals, it was very exciting. And they talked about the food chain. Then this one, and I was part of this, and then in Mr. Lebeck's class, they did the windmill project. They had to design their own windmill and they got a budget, so they had to stay within a budget, like tape was so much. Paperclip was so much, and then they would make a mistake here or there, so then they'd have to revamp their budget. More kind of real life stuff, and to see if their windmill worked. And the last one is Intro to Media. This is going to be phenomenal when we get to our new building with the green screen. So then they were making their own video clips. And if it works, might, think we can promise it's going to work?
Yep, I tested it earlier.
Oh, perfect, perfect. So then, then I could show you what kind of the, we, then our teachers presented this to all the teachers, all the elementary teachers in the district on our big last in-service day. Then our second go-round. Ms. Lebeck did a chemistry mystery unit. Ms. Zanikar did a unit, the world of iron ore mining. She brought in all of our companies to talk to our students about our heritage in mining. And I can speak, I have two grandfathers that were miners, and I have lots of aunts and uncles that were miners. Mining is very close to my heart in this community. Negan did creative writing, they actually, what they're doing is they're writing books for elementary students about that student. And then they're going to go read the books to them. It's really exciting. Mr. Lawrence is creating their own books. And then if you've ever want to teach high-level mathematics, PEMDAS, which is, you know, Order of Operations. Teach young people cribbage. It is the best game for number sets, for counting, for applied algebra. And they don't even know that they're doing it, it's, it's kind of neat. And then some other projects we have going on. We are doing a cooking unit, you know, planning, food safety, some simple things that they can cook in their house. Because many of our students don't spend a lot of time cooking. The Ever Feed Program, that's through the Minnesota Wild, and it's showing the applied math and science of hockey. That's a very popular one. Now we're going to be doing it in the movie making, so they're going to be able to do some of those sorts of things. So we're showing students not only what they learn, but how to apply them every Wednesday, and the kids love this. They love this. All right, how do I have to be?
Just hit the, one more time.
Oh, all right. And this is the.
Welcome to PBL News. In case you're wondering what PBL is, it stands for Project-Based Learning. Basically, it is two classes and you get to choose every six weeks, and you go to that specific class every Wednesday. Anyways, today I will be interviewing several kids from different PBL classes. Our first guest is Garrett, talking about Victor Krieger's class. Welcome, Garrett. Hey, Liam. Are you going to ask me some questions about my PBL class? Yeah, what is your PBL class? Fantasy football. Who's teaching this class? Mr. Kramer's. Why did you choose this class, Garrett? Because I like football and math. What was the goal of this class, and did you understand it? Yeah, it was to have fun with fantasy football. How will this impact your future? It will impact my future by helping me with my math skills. Did you like this class? Yes, I like this class because I got to spend time with my friends. Tell me more about what you did in this class. Well, every week we'd score points. And by the end of the week, by the end of the six weeks, actually, there would be a winner, whoever had the most points. And that was Jasper, I got seven out of 13. How are you liking PBL so far? It's fun because I get to choose what I want to learn. Thank you, Garrett. You're welcome. Welcome, Eliam. Hey, Liam, are you going to ask me some questions about PBL? Yeah, what is your PBL class? Ms. Lebeck. Why did you choose your class? Because I liked engineering. What was the goal of this class? The goal was to have your windmill hold as many pennies as possible. How will this impact your future? It will teach me how to engineer. Did you like this class? Yes. How are you liking PBL so far? I like it because it's fun for learning new things. Tell me more about what you did in this class. I have my windmill here, so basically we went into groups and we tried to make the strongest windmill as possible. And my windmill will hold 33 pennies. Wow, that's a lot of pennies. Thank you, Eliam. Yep. And our next guest is Janessa.
Hi, Liam, thank you for inviting me.
I'm going to ask you some questions, is that all right?
That's all right, with me.
What is your PBL class?
My PBL class is green screening with Mr. Negan.
Oh, why did you choose your class?
I chose my class because when I was choosing my classes, it really stuck out to me.
What was the goal of this class, and did you understand it?
The goal of the class is to understand how to do green screening.
How will this impact your future?
It will impact my knowledge of green screening and how to green screen.
Did you like this class?
Yes.
How are you liking PBL so far?
I like being able to pick my glasses and pick what my interests.
Tell me more about what you did in this class.
Basically, we made three videos and then shared them with the class. In my opinion, it was really fun and I hope to do it again.
Thank you, Janessa. Our next guest is Alice.
Hey, Liam, why am I here?
I'm going to ask you some questions on PBL, is that all right?
Yeah.
What is your PBL class?
Green screening with Mr. Negan.
Why did you choose this class, Alice?
Well, I like editing and I wanted to learn more about it.
What was the goal of this class, and did you understand it?
Yeah, the goal was to figure out how to make a video with green screening on my movie.
How will this impact your future?
I will be able to work better with others.
Did you like this class?
Yes, I like editing and working with my friends.
How do you like PBL so far?
I like being able to choose what I learn in my class.
Tell me more about what you did in this class.
Well, we, each week, we made, or over a couple of weeks, we made three videos using green screening, pop-ups, and more. And shared them with the entire class. It was really fun and I would definitely do it again.
Thanks, Alice.
Yep.
And our next guest is Abe. Welcome, Abe.
Hello.
I'm going to ask you some questions, is that all right?
Sure.
What is your PBL class?
Ms. Zanikar's class, or known as Animal Adaptations.
Oh, why did you choose this class?
Because I've always loved animals since I was young.
What was the goal of this class?
It was to take any animal you desired and put it together into a new creature entirely. You would then choose its habitat, you'd choose where it lived, what it ate, and other things like that.
How will this impact your future?
Um, I don't know. Maybe it would reinforce how much I like animals.
Did you like this class?
Yes, very much, probably my favorite one so far.
How are you liking PBL so far?
A lot, it's really fun and interesting.
Tell me more about what you did in this class.
So what I had chose was to take an extinct crocodilian known as Caracosuchus. And I had mixed it with a bunch of more modern-day reptiles. The name of what I made, I frankly do not remember. My creature lived along forests, swamps, and open fields. They're good swimmers, climbers, and runners. And it took on a crocodile-like appearance. There were lots of other animals, but I won't list those.
Thank you, Abe.
Welcome.
Janice.
I'm Liam.
I'm going to ask you some questions on PBL, is that all right? What is your PBL class?
The newspaper one.
Who's teaching this class?
Mr. Lawrence, our reading teacher.
Why did you choose your class?
Because I like writing and researching.
What was the goal of this class?
To make a newspaper for Rock Ridge.
How will this impact your future?
It will help me get a good job.
Did you like this class?
Yes.
How are you liking PBL so far?
It's pretty good because we get to pick our classes and it's just really fun.
Tell me more about what you did in this class.
We did like a sports section, an entertainment section, a weather section, students sat in a spotlight. I might get a North Star update.
Oh, it's really cool, thank you, Janice.
Yep.
Thank you so much to the people we interviewed.
We wouldn't have been able to do without them.
Also, thank you, Mr. Negan, for putting this together. And Fluffy, our crew members, Alice, Janessa, Liam, and me. Garrett. Although we had many obstacles, we still managed to pull this off in time. Thank you for watching PBL News. I hope you enjoyed. Learning about PBL anyways. Bro, we have to stop.
But if you notice, if you think of Costa's level of questioning, applying, that student, when he was talking about the animal and the habitat, he was applying what he knew in several different areas. And I don't know if he realized what high-level questions those are, to be able to do that thing. So I'm very proud of our staff for taking and taking the leap in project-based learning. Because this is where we're going as a district. At North Star, we're just, we're taking the lead on it, and I'm so proud of them.
It's fantastic, I love it, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Some future WDIO.
I would have liked school.
Want to be intimidated sometime? I'll bring them over and they can interview you, because that's intimidating, yeah, come over.
So 7.3, Superintendent Report.
Okay, Director Abby, I really don't want to follow the kids on that one.
Yeah, ain't gonna.
So can you switch the order? Okay, some updates for the board. I'm going to start with North Star updates. So we did receive a $4.7 million loan from the IRRR so we could finish North Star and get it done. The IRRR would like us to spend that money all on our star. They do not want us to use any of that money for demolition. So they're the ones who are giving us, loaning us the money, very kind, generous, because it will help us finish the project. We still are going to go to the legislature and talk to them. I'm going down on Wednesday to talk to a number of individuals about our unique situation here. Because we do have a great story to tell as far as why we should be assisted along. And so, but with the North Star building, the IRRR is loaning us the money. They're the ones who are determining how we should be spending the money. That's kind of the same thing how we've done with the, any kind of a donor. So they're telling me, and that was how their understanding was, that we would be using that money for North Star only. Not to tear down a building, meaning not to use the money on Virginia High School. So there really is no decision for the school board to make on this, because of where the money is coming from and the intent of the money. So we will use the money for North Star Elementary. What this means is that the building itself will be finished as designed. They will put new furniture in it, we'll build the playground. And so the playground, we will be able to do everything as it was designed. The only thing we can't do, and that'll use up to $4.7 million. The only thing we can't do is Virginia High School is still standing and there's no open play area. So politically, when we go back to the politicians and look for assistance from the House and Senate, we'll be looking for additional dollars that hopefully I can come back to you in the late spring, early summer, with some additional money for us to take a look at taking down Virginia High School and putting in the grass area, the playscape as it was originally designed. Of course, we'll be talking about that at a board level should that happen. We are still hoping for funds beyond that so that we have the ability, if there are additional buildings that need to come down, that you also can do that. So we're still, I'm still cautiously optimistic because you have one of the best stories to tell on this. Price is right, you sent the voters with the right amount of money, there is no scope creep, you did not add anything. And then the COVID inflation hit you on the North Star Elementary. Not in Laurentian, not in the high school, but especially on the North Star at D. So that's where we'll be working. So I want to let the board update on the North Star. The second update we'd like to give on the Gilbert buildings. We had a group of individuals come and talk to, you were there, combined work-study with us and the Gilbert City Council. And a group of individuals presented on some ideas for the Gilbert Building. They would like to turn the Gilbert Building, if it works out. If you agree, City of Gilbert is okay with it, and all of the funding mechanisms work, to turn it into a drone robotics maker space with some other options there. They talked possibly about daycare being in the building also. They talked about having some summer camps, they talked about some other things during the year. So it would not surprise me if they don't approach you with a potential MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, enter into agreement with you that they would like to have right of first refusal, so to speak, for a short period of time, which would allow them to get some additional architects, construction people into the building to take a look at it so that they know from their point of view what kind of costs they're looking at, fix-up costs or remodeling, that they would be looking at for their purposes. After which, they're going to come to a conclusion that either this is just too much money, it's not going to work. Or they're going to come to a conclusion that, yes, this could work. And then they're going to be approaching you with additional information. And with additional, well, things are looking like we might be able to do something there. So we'll see what happens with that one. I was at the meeting, as most of you were there also. There were questions from the audience, who was there? I think there were, I'm going to guess 10-ish, 15 people in attendance there, mostly from the city of Gilbert. Questions. When I talked to a bunch of individuals afterwards, it went all the way from, I don't know, I'm still thinking about it, to, boy, this sounds like something that could work. I hope it works. So we're following down that avenue right now. We do not have another group or another individual who is interested in the Gilbert Building. I've talked to about a dozen people over the past three-quarters year, year about the Gilbert Building. We have a lot of people who have looked through the building, talked about it. But beyond that, nothing has progressed. This is the group who has progressed the most and is expressing the most amount of interest in that building. The third set of buildings, update on the Evolus Buildings. We still have students in the Evolus Buildings, and they will be there for the rest of the school year. After this year is over, the high school kids, 7 through 12, will all come together to the new Rock Ridge High School. And so we will have some empty buildings there. The old Franklin Elementary will still be used because North Star students will still be there for one full year. And so that means, because the heating plant is actually more towards the high school, we still have the water, heat, everything will still be running there next year. As you know, the, as you've discussed in past meetings, the city of Evolus has right of first refusal. You've had a number of individuals talk to you about two buildings, mostly the old, a couple older buildings. The junior high was one of them, some individuals made some offers. The school board did not take them up on their offers because they were worried about follow-through, those individuals being able to do what they actually said. We took those buildings down. And we are working on, the city of Evolus has expressed interest in those. So we are working with creating title to get clear title to those for the city of Evolus. Because when all of those buildings were constructed, as near as we can figure out, the buildings were just constructed on land that they believe they owned. So we need to get clear title for the city of Evolus so they can do whatever they would like with the property, which I believe will be some type of housing. But we're working through the titling, title procedures. It's a long process on that. Because, not surprisingly, as anybody who has found out, who has bought a house, sometimes the lines aren't where you think they are, and sometimes things haven't been surveyed ever, or they're not where you think they are. So we're in the process of going through that, but that'll get resolved. This city of Evolus does want to consider development here, but I do not want to speak for the city of Evolus. So I believe that at some point in time, you will have some kind of conversations with individuals from the. with individuals from the city of Evolith. But as of right now, it's all in the discussion phase. I do not have another individual or group of individuals who has approached us about wanting those buildings, wanting to buy them, repurpose them into something else. I haven't had, there was one individual, we talked about him, the gentleman Paul Warshower, who did talk a little bit about him. He's kind of gone to the back room, but we don't have someone who's actively saying, I seriously want to talk about the Evolith buildings. But I believe that that will grow to be an increasing conversation. And I understand you're about to talk about listing those buildings in a few minutes. So that's what I know about those three buildings. These are slow processes. We're going to keep going through it. Sometimes the sequencing isn't working perfectly the way we would like it to go. But that's a general update for the board on those three properties. Any questions from any board members on those three properties?
Do we know when we're going to list the Evolith buildings at all, or, I mean?
That would be partly up to what you tell me as far as listing of the buildings. We have listed the buildings in the past. Gilbert buildings were listed in the past with the local realtor Andrea Lupanich. And those were listed for six to nine months. I think she had those listings. And that was for a money deal. She agreed to list them for those period of time. She did try to sell the buildings. She was not able to sell those buildings for whatever reason. And then the board paid her a fee for listing those buildings during that time period, and that is over. So since that time, the board, we have not listed them. We have worked to get materials, photos, pictures, which is one reason why we took the interior photos of the Gilbert building. You heard Spencer talk about some costs in regards to videotaping. We can also use that to show prospective buyers who don't live here. We can simply send them the file so they can see what the building really looks like. And we will need to do the same thing with the Evolith buildings also.
Okay. That would be 7.31, correct, Polly? Is that what you're talking about, the building list?
I have some questions on what you've said so far. So with the city of Evolith and the right of first refusal, as that was written up and explained, it was that if we would be marketing these buildings, Gilbert, Evolith, whatever, even the ones that were, that are down, but we would market them for two years after they were vacated. Well, in a way, now in hindsight, that's kind of a little bit too late because what happened with the Gilbert School, after it was vacated, there was a cost to maintain it and heat it and stuff, and so we closed it down. Okay, so that was like, oh, we probably didn't think about that. So like for the Evolith buildings, we're still ahead of the curve. And so the marketing of them, the right of first refusal was meant to be and understood as the city of Evolith would, if we were going to market them, if we had some offers, if we, they would match it. If it was for a dollar, they'd say, well, we have the right to give you that dollar. If it was for a million dollars and we found somebody, a developer, we have the right to give you that million dollars. It's not an exclusivity clause, is what I think you're talking about now, that maybe giving the presenters of the Gilbert, in Gilbert last week, and the ones that came to the facilities meeting that I sat in on.
That's what I believe they're going to ask you for, yes.
But that's not a right of first refusal. Like market it, market it. If you get an offer, we have the right to match it and buy it instead of the other person. I mean, that's more of an exclusivity clause, right?
Yeah.
She's right. But it's not. It's, but we need to keep marketing, especially the Evolith buildings. It's getting later and later for Gilbert. We don't know if this project, it sounds grand. If it happened, that would be great. But we don't know that. We don't know if there are other developers out there because we haven't commercially gotten a broker. I mean, they weren't even listed on LoopNet. LoopNet is the go-to commercial site, just like, just like the MLS is for residential and stuff. And so, you know, the old Evolith buildings, water's over the dam. But we did have a broker, realtor, lister. They didn't even appear on LoopNet. That's, that's the commercial where the developers go. So I think we need to make a sincere, bona fide effort and have the best project, not just the first one that comes along. And boy, wouldn't it be good? And we could, it's a possibility that we could have multiple developers. Maybe there's only two, but then we can pick the best of the two. Who knows? Maybe there's more because there's a big need in this area for housing now, whether that's part of the city of Evolith's plan or what. But, so I mean, that is probably the most viable of anything. But, so we're drifting into that. But I wanted to clarify the right of first refusal of the city of Evolith. And this one. So there, it is different. We still need to market so they can match or get first chance.
Yep, they will play out differently.
Yeah.
But we don't have anything from the group at Gilbert yet, but I believe it's coming.
Yeah, I'm actually jumping a little head forward to the Evolith buildings because we have more time to actually make something happen there. And as I sat in, it sounded like this group that presented in Gilbert at the committee meeting, they were also interested in all of the Evolith buildings too, in the beginning. So.
They did mention them at the meeting. I would not be surprised if you don't hear something in some way, shape, or form, and again, I do not want to speak for the city of Evolith, that you don't hear some additional information from them in the next month or two.
So just like the school had a meeting with the city of Gilbert, I think it's not too early for the whole board to have a meeting with the city council, you know, at this point in time, to get ahead of the curve and get some of these things, you know, talked, talked about. I know that they have, I've been following their minutes in some of their meetings. They received a grant to hire a consultant, the city of Evolith did, to help the city come up with ideas if they happen to get the Evolith buildings, okay? Sometimes it almost sounds like it's a foregone conclusion that they're going to be getting those buildings, but that's not what the right of first refusal is. So if they're, if they're that far along in that process, I don't see why we wouldn't even be interested, and we should be interested, in talking with them formally as public entities right along the way. That's what I would suggest.
If we have that conversation with them and they say, we don't want those, we don't want to save none of those buildings, we want to, we just want the land for development, then what do you do?
But they don't, they aren't automatically getting them, Bill.
No, 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 we would demolish the buildings. I mean, they would, you know, in other words, you know, if we get somebody that's interested in them and they exercise their first right of refusal, or whatever you want to call it. I mean, it is a first right of refusal when you think about it. They have the first right to attain that property and those buildings through that clause.
They do.
So it's like an exclusive thing. I mean, I don't know what that is in real estate terms, but it is a first right of refusal.
Well, I can't explain it any different.
But I'll back up. And I say, you know, we should be marketing these buildings. I mean, it's going to cost, it's going to cost the district money. Where you market them, I understand that. The cost of listing stuff is expensive because there's fees associated with if they do sell and if they don't sell. I'm not a realtor. I don't know where you would even list these things. I mean, are we not hitting the mark that we're not getting the people? Are we not, are we not like, I mean, Polly, you seem like we list them, but we're just not like, we're not doing it right? And I don't know, maybe you got the answer, where we should list them.
I think they were listed locally. I think they were listed by a primarily residential broker that has had some commercial experience, just like Nicole has had, but not an exclusively commercial broker.
So where would we go to find that person?
Well.
I mean, you seem to know.
They have them in the cities, I know that. But I don't, I mean, I don't have as much faith in this as Polly does, but because, you know.
All buildings don't sell?
But, yeah.
Because all buildings don't sell?
Yeah. But I understand that we need to do our due diligence too.
And we did, and we did say that we would list them first before we tore them down. We would try to sell them first.
So maybe we should go this route. And if you need help with that, I can help you too.
And just so the members of the board know, we have talked to commercial developers up north. They are not interested. I don't want to use names because I don't know if they want their names used.
It's a, it's a firm, a company, isn't it? Not just an individual.
Yes, but I talked to a lot of people and they tell me things, but they don't want their name public. And so we have talked to some commercial brokers. They are not interested in listing the properties for whatever reason. I don't want to speak for them. We did run ads in the Minneapolis Tribune. We did talk to some metro people who talked to me about the building for running various things. It just didn't go anywhere. It doesn't mean we shouldn't list them again and try it again. But the board needs to understand that how realtors think about buildings like this is that you're probably going to have to enter into an agreement where someone will list the buildings for X period of time and then you may have to pay that individual some money for doing that. And if you happen to get someone to, will take a percentage or whatever the fee is, more power to us, but don't be surprised if it's a flat fee and I'll list them for this period of time and I'll try and list them. The reason is, this is a lot of work for individuals to try and sell these buildings because we're in competition with other people from around the state who have these older buildings. And people want to make money. Brokers want to make money. So they want to sell buildings that will sell and they can make profit off of them. So that's, we just may have to do that.
And I believe we will have to do that because that fee structure is, they're not going to, any company, any business isn't going to put in a bunch of work unless they've got a guaranteed whatever, a percentage of a dollar or a percentage of $10,000 if we ended up selling that. No, nobody's going to do it for that. It's.
No, but you can work it in that the buyer pays for that fee.
Exactly. I was going there next. Yeah, there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of things you can work into an agreement, a purchase agreement.
Definitely.
But the city of Evolith has that, that clause in there that they want to see. You know, I'm just speaking for Evolith now because that was a little, there's a lot, that was more of a contentious contract where it was, we want a start date, we want a finish date, we want the cost of, cost of, you know, the cost of the project, cost per unit. There's a little more detailed when it comes to that.
That was their criteria.
That's their criteria. Now, when you start moving into somebody who's interested in that building, okay, say, just say the Franklin, okay? They're interested in the Franklin, okay? I mean, is someone going to give that to the city of Evolith? You know, the cost of the project, the start date, the finish date. You know, what's it going to be? You know, I mean.
That was the criteria that the city of Evolith came up with for what they considered would be a viable project. Okay, the viability of a project.
It's a bona fide offer.
Do you think they have a vested interest? And this is no disregard to the city of Evolith. I want to work with them as much as I can. I've got a good relationship, I think, with the counselors and the mayor, you know. But is that something like the fox guarding the chicken coop? When it's, they want, they want the property, and then they come up with a criteria and then they determine if it's viable or not? I mean, it's like all eggs in one basket and one entity who's got, got something to gain by it has the, has the power to tell us and we'll take their advice, whether it's viable or not.
That's what the contract said, stated, so we have to live by it.
Yeah, once, I mean, once we leave the city of Evolith, okay, then it's like, okay, it's our property still, but in good faith, we have to do something with that building. Okay, we just can't leave it there. You know, we give it a bona fide offer, the city looks at it. I mean, it's, it's pretty spelled out, pretty detailed. And I remember going through that contract.
Yeah, well, it changed a little bit after they had that, that trouble with whatever. But it's like saying, Bill, are you saying that, okay, I have a residential property and I've got a garage that's dilapidated? And so you're saying, I'm saying, I'll buy it, but you have to pay the cost of tearing down the garage? That's what you're saying.
That happens in a lot of.
Sure does.
It happens in a lot of sales. All you got to clean up all the garbage before, before you, before I'll sign, you know? I mean, all the garbage in the yard.
Anything happens in negotiations.
Yeah, I think so.
All right.
That's a big.
Okay, all right. So let's, let's move on.
Lots going on yet.
Let's move on. I mean, we've got time for to list these buildings. And Willie, 7.4. Willie, are you still awake?
I am.
Okay, we're moving 7.4, which was down there at 10.1.
Thank you. Super kind and much appreciated, I think, in real. Mr. Manning, that was awesome. Those kids were awesome. That staff was awesome. Thank you. That is a complete re-energizer, man. So that's probably why I'm still awake, Bill. Because that was incredible, super fun. What I'm most excited about is those kids are getting that experience with all of that video stuff because we have one, two, three video scoreboards in this new facility and they won't even flinch when we ask for kids to come run those because they'll already know how. So, way to go. That's awesome. I'm actually just here for an item, the stage, I believe, that I would like to, with your approval to purchase with incredible donation money from Mr. Bernstein, previous donor in the music arts wing. And this is money that we still have available for the purchase of the band uniforms. And you have this available to purchase the stage tech seated risers in the choir room and Mr. Bernstein has given us the go-ahead to do. So we really appreciate him for this awesome amount of money that he's given us.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Director Shorkin, supported by Director Lotiger. Discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vote secure.
Thanks again.
Thanks. Okay, well, we just move it right up to the top.
I guess sitting next to him, he can't hear you.
Yeah, who?
Nicole goes, I'll second. Brandy?
Yeah.
Oh, who is it? It was Lotiger.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll, I'll give you.
I don't get any credit.
Say, Bill, we didn't lose track of that discussion about the outstanding motion due for marketing. I mean, we've talked about it, but it's like, we need.
Marketing, listing of the buildings. We did, we did get a little off track. I would say that.
Just reminding that, you know, can we make another emphasis that they need to be marketed? And I know you talked about the package and there's all kinds of information and there's digitizing. So we need to, we need to do that somewhere.
I mean, can we just make, would this board support Noel Schmidt marketing these things?
Yes. Just go forward with our old.
Okay. Noel, just do your best to market them. Hey, Mr. Gallagher.
Good evening.
How are you?
You still got too long last time because you put us up. We'll try to make up.
Hey.
Early, it's early.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For those of you that aren't familiar with the KAT team, I'm Patrick Gallagher, the senior project manager. I have Max Vergelt, who will talk the specifics of the high school project. And Jeanne Avon, who will talk the specifics of the North Star project. This is our quarterly report to you, our very short and executive-level quarterly report. And a lot of you have went to the high school last board meeting prior to the board meeting and got to see the high school firsthand. Hopefully that was beneficial for you. And we'll give you this overall report for the, for the projects. So we will cover our normal core four, we call it, schedule, safety, quality, and budget. And then we'll have a contract amendment at the end. Schedule. So we have progressed significantly on our overall schedule. This pointer's not going to work. So we're at the backup. You understand that we completed Laurentian quite some time ago. This is the key one, the high school. We are wrapping up that project right now. We've completed all of our punch list items on, excuse me, all of our punch lists on that project. We are completing the punch list items now over the next month or so. We are looking at North Star coming up out of the ground. Steel is up, free cast going on. We'll have more detail for you on that one. Then on the demolition, you're between projects until spring when we will take out the, possibly the Virginia High School if additional funding comes available. And if not, we will just do the Malone and the annexes, as has been discussed many times before. So our percentages there are quite accurate. Again, this is for the end of December because that was the last quarter of the year. 100% on Laurentian, 97% on the high school, 24% on North Star, and 87% on the demolition budget. The demolition one, you've got to watch because the sculpt's been changing as we've moved funding for various reasons. Any questions on the overall schedule? Safety, good news story here. We're down to about 50 workers a day. We've been up in the 150 to 200, depending on which projects were overlapping before. But still, we have gone, we have 10 district contractors active on the sites. We have zero lost time accidents and zero OSHA violations. We have that program where we have consultation, where OSHA comes in. We actually work as a partner to make a safer job site. They do an inspection. They give us advice on how we could do things better. And in return, they can't give us a violation for a time period after that and then it goes back. And then it goes back into the normal situation for violations and enforcement. It's worked very well. Good, good people to work with and that's rare to say for a contractor to an OSHA situation. Just another real safe and great quarter that we have. So we're going to talk quality a little bit. I'm going to have Max Vergelt go over this. If you can get that pointer to work.
Looks like.
Can't. This one does.
Nope, I got it. Okay, so just first things first, we'll update you on the student construction projects or the outbuilding construction projects on the Rockridge High School campus here. So the slide you see up right now is the one that is included within any of your read ahead packets or any hard copies you received tonight. We did actually update this slide within like the last 24 hours as some new information became available. So I just want to state that. I'm going to flip to the updated slide now. So this is the newer current information that Kraus Anderson has. The majority of this is ultimately the owners or Rockridge Public Schools' decision on how to move forward. But this is what has been communicated to us. So just a reminder on where we sit today. The CTE students have completed a storage building at the baseball softball field complex. They've also already completed two varsity dugouts at the softball field and two varsity dugouts at the baseball field. So that's where we sit as of right now. And then what's currently being worked on is the storage building at the stadium area. Kraus Anderson is currently working on the framing or structural elements of that building as well as we will shortly be getting into making that building weather tight or waterproof. The reason why that has occurred, originally this was planned to be entirely built by the students, is the electrical panel that feeds power to the entire stadium complex is located within that building and that cannot be exposed to the elements. And so we've, we've kind of reached a compromise here where K A will be doing the minimum amount required for the inspectors to basically pass that area from an electrical safety perspective. And then the students will be picking it up for those siding shingles kind of finished items to still provide that really good learning opportunity. So we're working on that right now. We just started, you maybe have seen it as you drive in, start to see those walls go up, up there. But we should be done in the next couple of months with our portion. And then what's coming up this spring is the Carpenter's Training Institute will be making a press box at the varsity baseball field as well as the varsity softball field. And then at the same time, the CTE department and the students will be working on two dugouts at the JV baseball field. And then we'll go into our summer break and then come back next fall and the students will work on the final two dugouts at the JV softball field as well as finishing up the siding shingles, painting, any kind of final trim type of items at that stadium storage building that we're currently working on. And then at that point, there's a wetlands observation deck scheduled for the spring of 2024 by the students. And then there is the possibility of a future greenhouse project. Is my understanding, still working through the logistics of that, whether it actually happens or not, but we just have a placeholder line item for that as well. Okay, any questions on that?
Pat, you had a comment?
One of the major differences between the slide that was in your packet and this slide, and again, like Max had said, this is, this is run totally by the school district, right, as far as what they want to do? But you had, you have a tournament that's coming this summer, or an opportunity for a tournament. So to get as many of those ball field facilities done as fast as possible, put that stadium storage building back. We put a temporary over that electrical system up there, but we don't feel comfortable leaving that for several years without having a good weather tight building over the top. So that's why the last minute changes here in the schedule.
So question, so these student-built projects, were they originally in our plan that we would have bid these things out or was it always in the, in the bonding money or not in the bonding money?
Yeah, the, the majority of these buildings were bid as alternates, construction contracts, and those alternates were rejected by the school board at the time when we presented the bids on the Rockridge High School. So they were really never factored into the overall referendum dollars.
Okay, so we would, we will be saving some money with the labor and the learning experience, except we will be buying the materials and that will be our, well, that would be bonding money or that would be general fund money, the materials?
Spencer will probably take it out of either the capital budget or he could take it out of the.
To be determined which, where it's coming from. Okay, that's all.
Okay. And then just to go through some photographs of the Rockridge High School. Many of you were here for a brief update as well as a tour two weeks ago. So there should just be a lot of repeat information, but for a couple of you that were not here, we'll go through this. So just, this is the most recent aerial photograph of the Rockridge High School site as well as the district administration building. As you can see by the big blue arrow, you're sitting about right here right now. This picture gives you a really nice kind of satellite view of the entire campus, parking area, and how it all kind of relates to each other. And then similar shot of the stadium site. So just a reminder, Laurentian Elementary School would be sitting about right here and you can see the, the football soccer playing field as well as your grandstands, press box, your shot put throwing rings, and then your discus cages located on that Laurentian playground area. And then we're talking in detail about some of these buildings. So your concession restroom building is located right here that serves the stadium area. And then that storage building that we're working on right now is sitting right there. And then jumping down to the baseball softball field complex, give a nice view here of that essentially fully completed area now. You've got a progress parkway that comes in right here. And then this is your old white cedar drive that connects up to Borgon Road on the north end. You've got your four synthetic turf playing fields. And then as far as the, the connection to the high school site, here's your wetlands bridge or boardwalk for pedestrian traffic moving back and forth. And then you've got, as far as outbuildings go, the fully completed maintenance building, fully completed student built storage building, the contractor built concession restroom building, and then those series of dugouts that we talked about a minute ago that are currently in progress. And then to flip through some rendering comparisons, looking at recent photographs of the constructed project compared to the 3D images the design team created before construction ever started. So here's a shot looking at the main entry of the high school. You can see how the, the current state of affairs very closely replicates what the designer's intent was at the start of things, which is always really cool to see. This one's a picture of the welcome center. If you were along on the tour a couple of weeks ago, this one actually has come a little ways since this picture was taken and you saw a more recent version of this. But once again, you can see this almost complete space. This photo's of the main commons right inside of your main entry, one of the main feature or kind of special areas within the project. A lot of really unique design items in here with your wood ceilings, these overhanging rooms, and then your wood curtain walls or wood windows looking into the outside. So really nice space. We get a lot of positive comments anytime we do a tour of this area. It's probably one of our number one areas. And then the presentation plaza, which is down on level one. Once again, kind of a open circulation slash flexible learning space for students to be presenting or kind of collaboratively learning in this area. Another one of those really key design or feature areas. You've got your two-story wood curtain wall system located right here that looks out onto the outside and that learning courtyard. That's another big hit among the public as we take people around. Next photo is on level one of the north learning neighborhood. So these are the series of your different classroom areas and then this is more of a large group or flexible learning space. And you can see a lot of that furniture installation has happened now. That's scheduled to be complete by the end of the month as well, which really brings that building to life. If, if you walk around now, it's a lot easier to kind of picture the final product. And then here's an exterior shot of that learning courtyard. You can see both of your two, three-story towers of classrooms and then this exterior area that's available for any kind of learning, outdoor learning opportunities. This photograph is within the performing arts center. This is standing up on the, the top row of seating right where you would walk into that space and then you're looking down at your terrace seating and then onto your stage area right here. And this space has come quite a long ways actually since this photograph was taken. If you're able to walk out there anytime soon, this, the space is now done basically and a very cool, very unique, very special area for sure.
That's beautiful.
It's beautiful, yeah.
This one is within the activities commons or the athletics commons, which is that open circulation space between your gym and your pool. There's been a lot of furniture set up in this space since this photo was taken, but this is that kind of really cool space where you can come buy a hot dog or whatever and sit and have the opportunity to look into either that aquatic center or that gymnasium and view those activities as they're happening, which is really nice. This photo's within the fitness center. So this is the, the fitness center equipment package that at some point the school board approved for this area. You've got your turf strip for those football soccer players located down the center and then all your weightlifting equipment located on each ends. This one's obviously your gymnasium, standing on the primary or largest bank of bleachers looking out at your main court. As I'm sure we've talked about before, the other option is the, the bleachers can be retracted and this can be set up with three courts running perpendicular to what you see in this photo. And then some older photos of the stadium area as it's been sitting idle now for several months as winter conditions have set in. But here's just a reminder of your grandstand situation, which is fully complete at this point. You can see your press box located up here, your big stadium lighting located right here. And then here's where the stands obviously are.
We just can't seem to get the blue skies to come through.
I don't know how the design team came up with that.
They do a great job with the blue skies.
It's always nice in the rendering. And then exterior shot, just the backside image of what you just looked at. So this is standing on progress parkway as you're driving up to Laurentian Elementary School, looking at that grandstands and your very special scrim or branded wrap that's located on the backside there. And here's that concession building and then that storage building would be just right behind there. But this will be the main stairway that anyone will be using as they walk up to a All right, and those were the photos from Rockridge High School. Any questions on any of those pictures before I hand it off to Pete?
Nope.
All right. Thank you, Max. Okay. Ready for the big demo update? It's on hold. All right, moving on to North Star. Just, this is an older aerial photo. We don't have any updated ones with the current status of the project, but just a good reminder and orientated of how the building sits on the lot currently, next to the existing gym that we're going to connect to. And I'll have some photos of that, the Malone annex that Patrick mentioned that will be coming down for sure, 100%. And then the VHS building is still up in the air there, so. All right? So looking from Fifth Avenue at the school, at the front entrance, you can start to see that building come alive here. It may be hard to see up here on the, on the photo, but most of the structural steel is up. You've got a stair tower, elevator shaft, and the other stair tower on the northeast corner. And this is back in like early January, so if you drive by there, it'll be more progressed than these photos. Just trying to get it close to the corridor, right? So back in December, we had a little bit of steel up and I just outlined the foundations here that we had poured and that's kind of the outline of the building, of course. And then we moved to January and it looks like spaghetti in the camera, right? So this is all the structural steel. And actually looking at the camera today, you could see all the hollow core plank that Patrick had mentioned that we're working on right now. So it's a precast plank and they are all the way to the north end here and they're going to start working towards the east with that plank, so.
I saw him unloading a truck today.
Yeah. Cool stuff. So at the south end of the building, looking to the east, you can see now the overhang that's going to be kind of like a feature looking out on the south end of the building there. It's pretty, I don't think I've ever seen that at a school before, so. That big retaining wall and this is the stairwell and like I said, the overhanging structure and it'll be all glass on the end so the kids can look out. And then as we move into the connection to the gym, as I mentioned, this was from December and now you can see the progress, how much more steel has been put up and decking and like I said, the hollow core plank working there. Soon you'll start to see metal studs, probably in the next two to three weeks, and those will start in this area most likely. And then we'll just start working our way around the building. Just some more progress photos from December into January. And this is looking like from the commons when you walk in the door and looking back towards the kitchen. And this is looking from the northeast corner of the building and looking down the line of the foundation line here, the main entry and your common space here and that northeast stairwell and that other stairwell there, kind of anchoring the two ends of the building. I got to get these guys in here, Mr. Gallagher and Jim Roy, our superintendent on site, going over the game plan for the day, right? Keeping everybody safe. So this is standing in the commons, more of the middle of the commons and looking back towards the kitchen area. I don't know why I'm always looking at the kitchen. All right, any questions on updates before we go into budget? All right. So not much has changed in the master budget, except for one big thing, obviously the 4.7 from the I triple R B, right? And that all went to North Star, so that's where the change happened. All the rest of these projects pretty much did the same and then you got your new grant total of 198. And I'll show a slide of how you got there. And then 80% spent to date, so we're right on track, 20% left to go. The high school's going to be wrapping up here in the next few months financially and then it'll just be me and you for North Star. And me. Oh, sorry. Okay, I'm going to let Max jump in here quick for the high school specifics.
Yeah, so just on the high school, schedule wise, we talked about it a little bit upfront, but we're 97% complete as of the end of 2022 and have 3% to go. So we should be reaching substantial completion or we will be reaching substantial completion by the end of the month here. And then we'll have about a month of just some minor last due items before we're basically at that final completion mark. And then there's like a handful, five or so items that are weather dependent out on the site that'll be completed as soon as we thaw out in like the April, May time frame. And then on the financial piece of things, we are 93% spent through the end of January, which is within kind of that range we like to see based on project completion, so no concerns there, 7% left to go. And then on the project contingency, we've got about $100,000 left or .1 million as we're looking at our pie chart there. So just a tiny bit of money left, but only a tiny bit of the project left to go. So bottom line is, we do project that the Rockridge High School will spend all of the funds allocated to that project, but that we won't spend anything additional. So it's been the same story for the last few quarterly reports. We're projecting a net zero budget status at the end of the day. We're working on finalizing all those last costs, getting any final submissions from contractors or vendors, paying all those last final bills. And we should have all that information at that final, final status for our next quarterly amendment after quarter one of 2023.
Max, for informational purposes, could you explain contingencies?
Yeah, contingency is kind of the pool of money that's set aside at the beginning of the project to cover any. to cover any unforeseen costs, any scope that is added to projects. Those kind of things that basically nobody had budgeted for or accounted for, you know, back when the referendum was passed. But inevitably, things happen, things occur. And we set aside that pool of money beforehand to cover them so that they don't come as a surprise.
Okay, so for, this is the high school. And so the original was about 114.5.
Correct.
And then, so now that's about $7 million more. That's the $7 million contingency above and beyond what we originally planned. And was that contingency built in there, that $7 million?
A portion of it was built in at the time of the original referendum. And then a lot of it has been contributed through the fundraising dollars that you've approved throughout the duration of this project. The majority of what you've approved to date has gone into the Rockridge High School contingency to pay for a lot of upgrades that, you know, various donors have said, hey, we want you to add this to the project if we give you X amount of money. And so we've been giving change orders to the already hired district contractors to pay for a lot of these upgrades. And then that money needs to get reimbursed somehow. And the majority of it has happened via the fundraising dollars.
Okay, the majority of it. The majority of it through fundraising.
Yeah, like I said, we're, everything is currently accounted for. We're projecting that net zero. Yeah.
Now, there's some fundraising figure in here in one of these next ones. So I, there's a fundraising figure in here, so. I'll just look at that on my own.
Okay.
The contingency is the vehicle for bringing funds in for added scope items. That's what it relies. In a lot of cases, you'll run into something and you have to, like the district wants to add something. We move forward with that, especially with that long procurement process we had. The money comes three, four, or five months later. And that's why we take it from the contingency and then reimburse the contingency.
Gotcha.
Okay, any other questions on the Rockridge High School budget? All right, Pete?
Okay. As I mentioned, demo's on hold, so no changes to the overall budget and schedule. It's still sitting at 87% complete. Malone Annex remaining of the 70,000 square feet there. And then still at 60% of the expenditures spent to date. Contingency, we showed you this last time, a 50,000 contingency, half has been spent. And the other half is plenty to finish the Malone Annex. So we do have enough contingency for any unforeseen asbestos abatement that might have to take place or any unforeseen items that we come across as we're severing the building from the VHS. That's all that's hidden right now, so. Makes sense? North Star, a little bit larger gap here. That is due to our project progressing so nicely to about 25%, quarter of the way there. And during the holiday season, just had to do some catch-up on some billing, just a little delay in some bills over the holiday season. You know, a lot of people take time off and stuff, so. That'll start creeping back up to be closer to the schedule after this next month or so. Big change here, obviously the 4.7 infused all into the North Star project. So your new total is 37.8 million. And so change. And we've spent 5.4 of that. The contingency, if you remember, we took all that money out previously. And now we're reimbursing that, replenishing it with the IRRB money to make sure that we have that for unforeseen items in the future or added scope. And then also the GCs have been replenished with that money. And then all of the rest of that money went into the owner's soft cost budget. And what that means is that you guys get to decide what to do with that money however you see fit. So the contingency replenished, GCs replenished, and then all the rest goes into the soft costs for you guys to decide.
GC is general contractor?
Or condition.
The general conditions.
General conditions, yeah.
Any questions on the North Star?
I have a question, but it might be in one of the later slides. Okay, so the 4.7 million from IRRB, does Crowe Sanderson get or take their 2% from that money?
Not from the 4.7 revenue.
Right.
So that goes into the funding.
Okay.
Our 2% fee is based on the cost of work. So the contracts, the general conditions, contingency. I think that's all of them.
So.
So not the furniture, not soft cost type items, not, we don't get profit on, we don't get our fee on what you pay the architect. All those soft cost items on the bottom of the referendum budget that we've discussed many times. All the testings and inspections, third-party commissioning agents, all of that is owner's soft costs. So we don't have a fee on any of that.
So if we had more money, we have 4.7 to finish the North Star. The cost of work, that goes to the cost of work, but you get your 2% on the cost of work.
Only on the part that goes to hard costs.
On hard costs, okay.
And a big piece of that is the furniture, which was discussed last meeting. We would not get 2% fee on that.
No, but.
That's in the soft cost budget. Cause you're doing that direct, yeah.
Okay, do you have an idea of how, you know, approximate, well, it's 2%, whatever the number is, yeah.
I'll show you.
Yeah, I think I bet.
With this beautiful weather you've been having, you'll convince me that next week.
Yeah, no.
How far ahead of schedule are you? I mean, how far ahead of schedule are you because of the weather? I mean, are you weeks ahead or are you a month ahead or are you, I mean?
I'm gonna say we're right on schedule.
Okay, all right.
We had a few stumbling blocks out of the, out of the blocks to begin with, so we made a lot of that time.
When is North Star projected to be completed?
Early January of 2024. I think the substantial is January 5th. So then we'll have punch lists and all that kind of stuff after. Real similar to this kind of the high school. Kind of all three projects were about the same as far as completion times. Gives you a lot of time to do the move-ins and all the things you need to do before you start in the fall. All right. Amendment number seven. So I think Paul Lois gone over these in the past. So each quarter, we bring an amendment to you to adjust our contract, case contract with the district based on funding and cost of work changes throughout that quarter. Whether it's a decrease or increase, we bring that to you. So I think last time was a large decrease. Now you'll see an increase this time due to the funding coming back in and replenishing some of those hard costs.
So basically, we're about $20 million more than original referendum amount.
Yep, the original's 178 and a half. And now you're at the 198 here today.
It's a lot of money.
And maybe this is the slide you were talking about that you were gonna look at. So the project funding summary, so it just gives you your total, the 198. That 198 is allocated to each one of the projects. Color-coded here, Laurentian in the yellow, Rockridge High School in the green, Demo in the purple, North Star in the blue. So you can see how each project got a part of that 198 million. So and the 4.7 is right down here for North Star. Back on the $20 million ad and what Crowe Sanderson gets. One thing to look at too is $20 million more in work. And we didn't raise our site services at all. So what you pay Pete and myself and Max, that didn't go up. So you got site services on $20 million for the same price. You got the additional fee for 2%. But we didn't charge you any more money for the site service.
And it's $20 million based on an increase within the high school and an increase in the North Star. It's not just one building.
Cause it's time-sensitive, right? So you pay for Pat Gallagher for X number of months. Because we crammed $20 million of more scope into the same schedule, and he's laughing because it's a cram. You really make out quite well in that regard. And remember, a lot of that was scope ads, so. And not all of that was hard costs. So when I say 20 million of scope was put in, it wasn't all hard costs either. So a lot of it was soft costs as well.
Hey, Pat, can I jump in with just one thing for the board? Let me kill a rumor right here, cause I know some of you are hearing it, that the high school is over budget. That we're over budget. No, we're not. What happened is the $20 million is that's everything that was added. Keep in mind that you also made some money on the interest of the bonds. That was higher than expected. It's like $2.6 million. You were able to use that on the buildings. You've had some fundraising money, 2. plus million dollars that was never originally in there. You were able to make some things nicer than were originally intended. We've had some other monies that we've put into there, the school boards before the schools were together. Virginia threw in an extra 2.5 million. Eglith Gilbert threw in an extra 3.1 million. And the purpose of that was to make Laurentian a little bit larger, which was a really good decision by the Eglith Gilbert School Board. The Virginia Board, what happened to their 2.5? A lot of it went to increase the tech ed area size. It was in HVAC. It was allowed us to do some things that we never, ever would have been able to do. It made the music area larger. We spent some money on things like this. So you have a whole series of things that happened and broke well for you that allowed us to do some things nicer than we, than you ordinarily would have. So this is not because the costs ran rampant on the high school and Laurentian Elementary. We had some revenue supplies coming in that helped make it so that we could make the high school and Laurentian even nicer and even better. So that's what happened. I know you're hearing out there, these are not cost overruns. This is not because the board was spending well. You had some revenue that normally you wouldn't have had. So that's what that is. Sorry, Pat, I will not interrupt you.
Not a problem. All right, any other questions on this one?
You've got some numbers combined here that the deferred maintenance and tachinite commitments, that they're two different funds, but you kind of put them together. You've got about 7 million for, or 700,000 for the high school and about 2 million for North Star. I suppose those can be divided, divided out, itemized out separately.
I think the total on that was 2.4 million.
Yep, I see that. But you just put those two funds together for this chart. But those can be itemized out.
Yes, so.
To know which, how much is the deferred maintenance and how much is the tachinite commitments? So I can get that from you another time, I just.
And that, that's really a good question for Spencer, not to deflect this one. But we received that additional revenue. And what that split was is really up to where he took those dollars from.
Part of that was for the, the.
Wrestling?
Heating units and into the old gym and into the basement, wasn't it? At, at the North Star.
Deferred maintenance is anything used on an existing building.
Yep.
So a lot of on North Star, on your project, are about the. It was not for the boilers though, cause the boilers are building along with the whole building. They wouldn't let us. So it's all the other work taking place at that existing gym, yeah. So repainting, structural rework, floor refinishing. Roofing. Roofing. Air handling units within that building. Yeah, yeah.
That specific contribution also covered the multipurpose or wrestling space within this building.
Anything in an existing building, they will not let you use it on a new building. So we just lump those together because you can use those funding sources where you took it from. Really not our place to say that.
That's Spencer.
Rob, exactly. As long as it comes, we're happy, cause we gotta pay the bills.
That real allocation of funds, the red, the red numbers and that went into, oh, I see, we came out to the good for the Laurentian. We came under budget, right? That's the red one.
Yep.
And, well, that's Demo, but that's still in the budget? Or is that's more that we expended than we had in the Demo budget?
So that 3 million from the Demo is the money that we took from the Demo project and moved it to North Star.
For Virginia.
To make it whole.
For, for the Annex and for the Malone?
No.
To Demo?
Just in general, yeah.
Oh, just in general?
Yep, just in general.
Till the infusion, till the infusion came and then it'll go back, right?
So back on a little history thing, remember the inflation? And we didn't have enough dollars to do the whole North Star. But we didn't wanna stop progress on it because of inflation kept going up. So we were able to take dollars from Demo, put it into award all the contracts. But we didn't have any enough GCs or contingency, cause we took monies from there first. So that's where those dollars got taken from. Now, if you get more state funding, which sounds like things are going well, you could reimburse that Demo and then that whole Demo project increase. And just to make sure I answer your question, Director Addy, is that exactly what just Patrick said is the only way that Demo money now will get reimbursed is from the additional state funding, not from the IRRB, so. Okay, so amendment number seven. If you remember amendment number six, it was a large deduct for the general conditions and fees. General conditions got removed from the North Star, a large portion to make the budget whole. And then obviously then the fee goes down when that goes down. So as the money came in and we were able to replenish the hard costs of general conditions and some other hard costs, the general conditions is getting surplus. And then our fee goes up with that as the 2% of cost of work. And I think that's what you were asking before, right? So a total amount of 666,141 and some change is the total add for this amendment. Then the next slide or page in your book is just a breakdown of all of that numbers between all the projects. And again, matches the total 666,141 and 82 cents for the total. And then you do have the full amendment, official amendment in your board packet as well. This is just the overview for the slides. Now we'll open it up for any questions that you have specifically on the amendment. And if not, then we would like to ask for approval of amendment number seven.
Can I get a motion to approve amendment number seven?
So moved or support?
Support by Johan, or, support by Johan, motion or by Director Riordan? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Curious unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving along to nine policies. We got 732, 206. 534, 604, 722.
515.
451. 515, 801, 802, 805.
604, 722.
What are you seeing there? Oh, 604 and 7, okay, all right, sorry.
I'd like to take 206, number two separately, please.
Okay, you wanna remove that? Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to take 203, two, and I would like to look at it to remove old, old finished business or unfinished business out of there. I just don't think that 203 should be on there, cause you know, we're gonna get into lengthy. Thanks, John. I think we're gonna get into item number 10 on 203 is other and, other old and unfinished business. I don't know if we really, this board really wants it on it to create more longer meetings, I mean, what's, what's.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not concerned necessarily about making it a longer meeting. What I am concerned about though is, or my thought about it is, we have an opportunity to contact the board chair or the superintendent about different things that, you know, like, hey, you know, easement, you know, following up. Can you give us an update on that situation? You know, so something that's come up before that we think, oh, you know, I forgot, we didn't do anything about that. We can contact the board chair or the superintendent and just ask for them to, to add a discussion on it. I don't think that it needs to necessarily be a separate.
Line item.
Line item.
Well, many public entities do have it as a line item. And for example, tonight, my added item would be unfinished business because we have a standing motion about marketing the schools. And just to keep track, I guess, maybe just to keep track as a list. Not that we necessarily have to discuss them, but we've gotta keep track of unfinished business. Not that we necessarily have to discuss them, but we've got to keep track of unfinished business, I think. I know the cities have that on there.
I just, we can contact the board chair, the superintendent if we, if there's something we need to.
Maybe because that list on unfinished business could be, get very long. I mean, there could be a lot of things.
I know, but you just have to keep track of it.
Yeah, but not at all.
Well.
I agree.
And there's something, it just keeps coming back like a boomerang. It just, I mean.
I'll make a motion to approve the 203.2 without line item, number 10, other old or unfinished business.
Support.
And I, you know, we had the discussion about the treasurer's report. And I think that, that falls under number seven, under reports. So we wouldn't have to do a separate line item for that either, for treasurer's report.
And we didn't get this in the packet, so you must be looking at your iPads, huh? Yeah. Okay, that's okay. I think I, I know what it says.
So I would, we've got motion by Director Lotteger, support by Director Riordan. Any more discussion on removing item, line item 10 on the 203.2? None being had. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so it's 52. Okay. Policy 206. Holly, what do you want to talk about on there?
Well, just following along with the procedure that happened with just 203.2. You know, we talk about simplifying our policy and under visitor input and agenda items and not agenda items. When you do compare just the easy, simple MSBA one under open forum. Theirs is open forum, ours is visitor input under C. Over time, we have added two or three sentences. And I think it'd be just simpler if there was no form, there was just a sign up sheet. That form has caused a lot of problems and a lot of miscommunication. Plus again, the form and the guidelines don't follow our policies. They talk about non-agenda items, agenda items. I know we're all, we're going to go on just any agenda item now.
Can I, can I just, we're in MSBA model policy, does it say you have to fill out a form?
It doesn't. I'm saying we added that and I.
No, we took it out. Didn't we take, we went back to model policy.
No, listen, go look at the red line one of our policy, C, page five. Okay? Now we changed it to the school board on any topic. That was the original MSBA language. And then subject to the limitations of this policy, period. That's where MSBA ends. Over time, we have added, if a person wishes to address, and we took out a non-agenda item, if the person wishes to address the school board, a request must be submitted to the, we added district office or school board chair in a timely manner. Now, the timely manner is now it's what, three hours before the meeting, right? On an official form by the district. That's all new language. That's caused, that's been causing so much, what would you say? Bad, bad feelings with the public. It's confusion. People say, I didn't know here. What would be simpler than you just come here, come before the meeting, sign up to talk, okay?
I think.
That's the simplest. Yeah, go ahead.
I, you know, I, I can understand what Polly's saying about that. I think that, I think that I could say a request must be submitted to the district office or school board chair in a timely manner or on an official, the online form.
But that's still the same.
Because I think, I think if we, I think if we add or on the official, there are people that would prefer to do it online. I'm a person that would probably go online and, and fill it out and send it so that I could speak before the board. So it's just another option for people to go to get on, you know, to speak.
But it, you know.
So I would say or.
I'm requesting to take both of those things out to make it simpler and just have a sign up sheet at, just before the meeting. And the three hours, that's, now that's a three hour thing. But then the board chair can unilaterally decide to allow it or not allow it. That, that is so confusing. And then the rest of that red, I, my suggestion and motion would be to take out that, these two sentences and all of the red, district office chair at least three hours and the board chair, the exception, blah, blah, blah.
We're passing the edited version, the third reading.
Well, Brandy just edited this one, the previous one.
So we could get to the third reading because it was better than the one we passed last year. And then we're going to go back to the policy.
The only, the only thing that I think that would be an or.
Is that what you thought?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
The only thing that I would say for any kind of an edit would be an or instead of and. And then the rest of it, I think, is pertinent. I, again, you know, I do think that we need to have some sort of guideline. You need to notify the, you know, board chair, the superintendent or do the online form with, you know, before, three hours before the meeting. And I do think the school board chair can make exceptions. I don't, I don't want to have to go through a vote every time somebody says, can I speak? And, you know, oftentimes we've had the school board chair say, you know, kind of look at the board and say, what do you think? You know, and we'll get input. I don't think that we need to have that.
Every, every time it can change and then we look, we aren't falling pause.
So I, I'm saying, I, I do think that this is what we should pass. Just put or on the official form created by the district.
And that's not changing, that's hardly changing. That's really not changing anything.
It's giving, it's giving people the same, a bunch of different avenues on how they can speak to the board. They can either contact the district office, they can contact the school board chair via email or phone call, or they can do the online form. I think that it's giving people multiple different ways.
Why not sign up when you come to the meeting?
Because I think that you, I think that everywhere that I looked online at different districts, lots of them had forms and lots of them had similar specifications about having 10 people speak or having a timeframe. And again, you know.
Let's try it.
No, well, here, I, I pulled up, I pulled up Masabi East. And it says each speaker will be allowed five minutes for his or her presentation unless the time limit is waived by the majority of the board members present. When there are a large number of speakers to be heard, the Board of Education may shorten the time. Okay, and they may shorten the time. So they can dictate, you know, we've got a long meeting here, we're only going to give you one minute. And yes, they do have a form right here. I mean, it's just like to, to say other districts don't have forums. I mean, I mean, these, these, these forums are, I mean, when you, when you get a Tennyson warning from a citizen over this, I mean, I mean, because that's what the Tennyson warning was over the fact that they were asking name, name, you know, your phone number, your address. I mean, I mean, I don't, I know, but, you know, I'm just saying.
Okay, I actually called, I called Masabi East, I called Hibbing, I called Chisholm. I talked to friends that were on school board just to see. Masabi East is the only one that I talked to that does have a form. And she said, you can come into the office and fill it out or I can email it to you. It was real like, no big deal. She's like, oh, nobody, it was just so no big deal, which I like. But Hibbing is, and Chisholm did, they're just like, it's easier. They do just have a sign up sheet at.
Why do we need a form?
And honestly, I know that I was part of this policy and it sounded good at the time, but now it's just like, let's just make it really simple.
So why do we need a form? Please answer.
We always are talking about, you know, the city council and, and I don't think there has. I've been to the city council meetings.
No, you can just go there.
And you can just go there. I don't know that.
They're a different.
They're different, right.
Different organization, they have different rules.
They're a different organization, so what? They're a public entity, they have public input.
I still think it's different, but I do think that a lot of school boards are doing just a sign up sheet, so.
Yeah.
And, and honestly, it was pretty easy by, like, she's like, oh, it's not that big, you know. And she's like, I can email it to you or you can come in and.
These meetings start at 5:30, okay? Their meetings start at 5:30 and you have to have this form in by 4 o'clock.
Why? Why not just sign up?
Because this is Masabi East, I'm just saying.
There's 430 some districts in the state. And you know what? So a lot of them don't have it. A lot of them just have sign up sheets.
Chairman, I'd like to make.
No, I made a motion already to take that out, Tim.
It wasn't.
Well, no, we didn't get a chance. People just.
I'd like to continue discussion if you don't mind. So the, the, I'm, you know, the or part. The reason why I would like to do the or is because there are people that are not.
Tech savvy.
Right.
That's right.
Right, that's true.
That's, that is.
I, I'm okay with or for the form, but I still think all the rest pertains. I think that having, having to notify the superintendent's office or the board chair three hours before and allowing the board chair the discretion, the only thing that I would like to see and is that changed to an or.
What's magical about three hours? It used to be 24 hours, now it's three hours. Why isn't it like five minutes before the?
Holly, do you know how many times I've, and I'm sure you have to because you've been on the board, but we've heard feedback for the past six years about different things. Again, I, I tried to do a form to, like a brochure, not a form for them to fill out, but a brochure so that people understood and were more clear on what the expectations were. You know, if they wanted to speak to the board, the steps that they had to go about to, to speak, you know, to the board. We've had people come and say, well, how many people can, how many people can speak? How long do we get to speak? And all those kinds of questions. And I just feel like, you know, saying three minutes, 10 people, it gives people those specifics because they will ask.
Three minutes is fine. I'm not against that or five minutes, give five minutes to speak, that's fine. But, but 10 people, I think Tom made a good point. When we say we're going to give all people a chance to give their input and to participate, then why do you limit it? I don't think, I don't agree with that limiting either, but there's nothing magical about three hours. Why do we need a form? Why do we need a form? And why do we need so many hours before a meeting? You know, some people might just come up and, and not even think about speaking until they come to the meeting. And they think, oh, three hours, I can't talk now, you know? Maybe I'm just looking at the agenda before I come to the meeting as a person of the public. I think it's arbitrary, very arbitrary, this three hours. So the simplest thing.
I'm just in clarification for just a second. So if we do have someone come and they want to speak, are we going to allow them to speak?
At the, at the.
At the direction of the board chair.
Yeah.
In other words, if someone wants to come and speak, you know.
Like they haven't given notice and we're, I mean, I just, are we more open about that now?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would say yes, but if we get a barrage of people here that want to.
I think that's important, yeah.
You know?
But I will say that when we say three minutes, it's three minutes.
Right. But when, but when you have an individual, why is it, when you have an individual come here, why is it the boards? Why is it the board chairs? Why does he make this decisions? Well, because you have to have a decorum here. You have to maintain order.
I thought Bill did a great job today with the, like, whatever. It was fine.
I mean, because you're going to end up with people coming here yelling.
Right.
I mean, and, and I just, I mean, I've been through that. I went through the first four months of, the first four months on the board, I went through that. And it was really uncomfortable.
I, I have talked to other people on boards and they said that, I said, how do you deal with that? Because you're meeting, they're like, that's just their entitled, they, they can speak, we just let them. And, you know, the meeting goes, they just know that. And this is, I've been talking to my friends who are on other boards, namely Chisholm and Hibbing, so.
And, and every board is different. We're making decisions for Rockridge School.
No, we are, but it is good to know what other people do.
You know, I believe that she's got a motion on, Polly's got a motion on the table. I don't know if there was a second or not. The motion.
It was, and we didn't, the motion on it.
I didn't get to finish it, so. I would take out the three hours limit and to not the discretion of the board chair. Because if you don't have the three hour limit and you just let people come and sign up before the meeting, you don't need the discretion of the chair. Because if they put their name on the paper to, to speak, they get to speak. There's no discretion. The discretion comes about if they've met the three hour deadline or not.
Discussion.
Okay, I take that whole.
And then was also going to make a motion.
But wait, no, I'm not done yet. That, that's my first one. I could make them in separate, separate amendments too.
Please clarify, I'm sorry.
Okay. C.
Yes.
Just go back to the MSB. Okay, so the first sentence, fine, on any topic. The sentence, sentence where it says, if it starts, if a person wishes, all the way to limit time for speakers accordingly. We don't need any of that if we just let them have, sign up at, at the meeting. I would take that out. Now, the other one I'm going to propose is to take out, well, that's the three hours, all of the red down there. It just is the same thing. On top, it says in a timely manner, when you go down to the red paragraph, the timely manner refers to the three hours, okay? And then you added the discretion of the chair. You don't need that. And an official form created by the district. I think we don't need that. It's causing so much trouble and confusion in the guidelines. The booklet, Brandy, that you said, that was the guideline document and that's contradictory.
Mr. Chair.
Taken, okay, I, that's the first, my first amendment is to take that, if a person, all the way to limit time for speakers accordingly.
Where's that at, Polly, on here?
C, visitor input, the second sentence.
May I say something?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair. If we change this, it isn't the final reading.
That's right.
That's my question. It isn't the final reading and I thought at our working session, we said that we would pass this.
Well, this is the third reading. I agree.
So that we can have a starting point and then we can bring it back to the policy committee with other policies that may, that may have, you know, be involved in 206 and like 203 and 2 whatever.
That's the same, same thing, yeah.
This is the final reading.
But if you edit it.
If you edit it, it becomes a first reading.
Just like the, just like 203.2. That's going to be a first reading again too, because we changed it. So what's wrong with that? It's going to come back to the board again. Are we going to go through another three readings?
Why don't you make your motion and get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion by Director Sorkin, I mean, and support by Director Colbert Dahl to remove, as you heard.
The whole second sentence and all of the red.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in opposed signify by.
No.
No.
I would like to make a motion to accept 206 as presented with the exception of changing visitor input, C, where it says, if a person wishes to address, the board or request must be submitted to the district office or school board chair in a timely manner or on the official form created by the district. So all's we're changing is.
One word.
One word instead of and.
Go back to first reading then again?
It, it would, but I think all the rest, everybody else.
It goes back to the first reading.
But the thing is, is everybody else, the last meeting, everybody else seemed to agree. It seemed that everybody else was okay with this first reading. Because originally, when we were on the, on the policy committee, we did go.
I know, I just feel like it's so complicated right now that I have a headache and I'm trying to make it easier, you know?
And, and again, we've gone, I've gone through these every year, it seems. I think we do every year.
That's because it's still confusing.
And it's, and we're clearing it up, but we are being more specific for community members because I have heard that they want us to be more specific. How many people? What's the timeframe? And as far as the how many people, I heard the question come up about, you know, how are we going to determine that? Well, if you've got 10 people sending an email or contacting the superintendent's office, they're getting a, you know who's first and who's seventh, I mean, and who ends up 10th. If there's other people, then they get on the next meeting's agenda. You know, we're not limiting, limiting people on speaking. We're, we're setting guidelines and having our meetings run a decent amount of time.
You know, and we also, and we also took out the fact that, okay, it's, it can be on a non-agenda item.
Well, that's huge.
I, I grant you that.
You know, I mean, so I mean.
Trying to make it easier.
Right. So all's I'm.
That makes sense.
My motion is to accept it as presented, just change and to or under C, visitor input.
And that brings it back to first reading.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Motion by Lotteger.
I mean, but do you agree, John? I mean, some people are not, thank you, are not tech savvy.
Yeah, they are. Okay. Tell me when this is.
Any discussion?
All right, so Brandy, I might compromise and agree with your change of and to or. But with the addition of another or, or sign up at the table before the meeting. Sign up on a list before the meeting. So there are three ways now they can do that, that, or now they can just sign up at the table just before the meeting.
For the non-tech savvy. For the non-tech savvy.
That's a third option. If you want to give them lots of options, that's.
We have a, we have a motion.
Why wouldn't you want that?
Why wouldn't I want that? Because I think that the board chair should know who wants to speak, what the topic is they want to speak on.
That might not even be legal, asking the topic.
Whether they're in our district is another thing. I mean, we're at that meeting.
Does it matter?
It matters to me.
It matters to me.
Yeah, we were threatened by people that weren't even in their district.
Might not be legal.
Well, that's why I like the form personally. And whether you can call in the superintendent's office or whatever.
You know, and I don't.
Can I just say one thing? Because when I did call, then they did have the thing to sign up. You did have to still put your name and number and the reason why you were there and then they would give it, because I asked all this, and then they would give it to the board chair to approve or whatever. And that, they said 15 minutes before the meeting. I'm just saying.
I'll just throw in, if there are kids that come to this school that do not live in the district too, so that's.
I was at that meeting. There were people that homeschooled their kids that were, in that Gilbert meeting last, was that last summer or whatever it was? It was.
Two summers.
Two summers. And I, I know there are people, the kids that weren't in their district that were at that meeting.
Okay, it's also an unusual circumstance. That was a highly charged time. Like since I've been on the board, I've not seen that at all and that it can't happen again.
And I think we're trying, sorry, Nicole, I think we're just trying to figure out how to diffuse that from never happening again. Really, that is.
To be honest with you, I really think it's, it's probably on its way back with the garbage on social media right now. I just think I have a feeling.
Well, there's a motion on the table. There's support by Reardon. I think we should vote.
Okay.
Would you accept a friendly amendment?
No.
You don't want people to just sign up for the meeting?
No, I mean, the policy committee discussed all these.
You know, you even said, Brandy, you recommend, the board could change it, you said. That's where we're at.
I think you can do an amendment to the amendment and then we'd have to vote that and then we, if we voted down, then we'd have to go back to that.
You're right.
And we could have done that with the first one.
Yeah.
And we haven't fully adopted Robert's rules.
We, it's in our, it's in our policy.
It's easy.
It's in our policy.
Move on.
I'll make an amendment to the.
Okay, wait, wait, we got to get through Brandy's first.
No, amendment to the.
Oh, there she can.
Yeah, all right, so we got to, an amendment is to or sign up.
Another or, to sign up just before the meeting.
If you got a motion, motion by.
I, I second it.
Seconded by Director Wesby to add or sign up, or sign up. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That's politics, that's democracy, right?
So again, I'll make the motion.
No, you don't have to. It's, that one, hide your motion on the table.
How we vote on yours.
Okay, all those in favor of, of Brandy's, of accepting it with the word change of or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that fails five.
That passes.
That's five two, sorry. Okay, very good. Now we're going to go on to.
But related, we have to look at the guidelines and the form. It's not, it's not consistent.
So we were going to say we were going to make it consistent, for sure. That's what we decided.
It doesn't have to be.
Yes, that is what we decided.
All right.
But I do.
What about the rest of them now?
We're going, we're going to do those all together.
I, I would make a motion to accept the, is it the third reading?
By Director Lauder.
Final reading.
The final.
By Director Colbert Dahl.
Fourth, twentieth.
Fifty-sixth.
We can do that just once.
Any discussion on, I did, I did explain, 5:15, 5:34, 6:04, 7:22, 8:01, 8:02, 8:05 as a grouping. We got a motion by Director Lauder, support by Colbert Dahl. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Administrative, oh, that's.
10.1 is me.
Huh?
10.1 is.
10.2.
10.1 is.
Consider approval of the three-year partnership between the University of Wisconsin Superior and Rockridge School District.
10.1 is discussion on school safety.
Yeah, we did swap that out.
Oh, that's right, right, school safety.
We moved that.
I'm so sorry, Brandy.
Brandy's add.
Yep, no, that's no problem. So discussion on school safety. So last year, there were some safety concerns that, I think it was last year, some safety concerns that were brought up to, brought to our attention about bathroom safety and different shenanigans that were going on on the Virginia, Virginia campus. And as a result, we hired a hall slash bathroom monitor, I believe, to help, you know.
Contail.
That, yep. And then increase the SRO presence. So I received confirmation from a number of staff and some students that that is now happening on the Evlith campus. And so I'd like to just have a discussion on problem solving that situation because I want to ensure that all kids are feeling safe, all staff are feeling safe. And if we need to hire a bathroom or hall mon, hall monitor to ensure that there's safety.
What we have to do is direct the superintendent to do that.
Or, you know, I'll, I'll throw out the discussion too. I mean, I don't, I'm guessing our budget, we need to take a look at that, but you know, do we need a second SRO? One for the Virginia campus, one for the Evlith campus, and then when we come together next year, we'd have two.
We discussed. I, I like the idea of the hall monitor too, but yeah, making sure.
I think maybe we, let's start there.
Are they paras?
Yeah.
Noel?
Yes, members of the board, the one we hired in for Virginia High School last year was a para. Now that person, they did hire that position back again. It's like a floating para who goes wherever the principal needs that para to be. We also did hire a floating para at Evlith Gilbert High School. So there is someone in the building who is going where the need is the highest. However, and that person is spending additional time at the bathroom specifically. They have closed down some bathrooms. This is what high schools do all the time when there's shenanigans. They start closing down bathrooms and keeping only one or two open. And that's what Evlith Gilbert High School has done. So I was at Evlith Gilbert High School for a couple hours this morning in some classrooms, trying to understand the situation as far as what was happening. So if you direct me to hire a para specifically for the bathrooms, we will do that. We'll do our best to look and find something. And talking to Mr. Gerpentrug, we're also going to switch some para situations around and we're going to put some paras on students, specific students, to try to help the situation because this is not an issue being caused by a lot of different students. These are some situations caused by a handful of students. Again, this is, most of the kids are doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. They're well behaved. They're absolutely doing what they're supposed to do. So we are going to switch some para things around to get, to take care of that. If you would like me to advertise for another para at Evlith Gilbert High School specific for this, we will do that.
I would like to see that happen and, you know.
True.
It's only for a couple of months.
Hopefully that'll curb it and then if we need to look at an SRO, an additional next year or something.
We won't have to worry about it at the new high school because there's singular bathrooms.
So you're saying we have floaters at both the Virginia and the Evlith High Schools? The Virginia has a monitor, a bathroom monitor, and we would be adding up one, the same thing in Evlith?
They exist right now. We don't call them bathroom monitors.
But they're like hall monitors, right?
Para monitors.
Okay.
Hall monitor is probably the closest thing to call them. Both high schools have someone who's doing that. So and last year, there was a little more issues at Virginia High School. Now they just have to be at Evlith Gilbert High School. So if we can find another para, we'll do, if you tell me yes.
I would like to do that.
Are things better at Virginia then? Because I know the big issue probably at both places is vaping in the bathrooms and people, our kids are afraid to use the bathrooms.
Vaping is, is just exploding everywhere. Every high school is having problems with vaping because the kids think nothing of it. They like to go into the bathroom and vape and that's happening everywhere on the range. And so a lot of the problem is caused by vaping. There are some other issues in Evlith Gilbert High School that are separate from vaping, which we're trying to take care of, was we'll need some paras around and I think we'll be successful in eliminating a lot of it there. But it never hurts to have another hall monitor that's specifically looking at certain areas.
Do I need to make a motion to post for a floating hall?
Or do we just ask them to do it? Yeah.
Yeah, I would say just.
I don't need to make a motion. You can, we're just giving you direction.
Well, if. So there's no confusion here.
Yeah, I'm confused.
Be careful to have a motion.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we direct Dr. Schmidt to hire a floating para for the Evlith campus specifically to monitor the halls and the bathrooms.
I would second that.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering, so you said you're doing things to move things over. I mean, like, what is your personal opinion? Because I know you said whatever we direct you to do, but do you think it's necessary or?
Safety of the kids is.
What do you think?
Upstate.
In the immediate term, it's probably something that should be.
Okay.
There's some other things we can do to calm things down, but I believe it would be helpful.
Beneficial. Perfect. Thank you.
So confusion. Now, are we voting for, we don't have a monitor on the Evlith High School, but we do in Virginia, so now we're adding one in Evlith? Is that what we're doing?
Kind of have one or we kind of have like, yeah.
You have one?
You have one already.
Okay, that's what I said. You said we have.
You're not telling me to. What I think you're going to make vote on is telling me to add another one at Evlith Gilbert High School.
Yeah, floaters at both, but now we're going to add another one in Evlith.
Yeah.
And we don't have another one in Virginia, but we do have a monitor in Virginia.
There is a monitor in Virginia and keep in mind, there also is an SRO.
Right.
At Virginia High School.
And we have outstanding issues going on that we want to.
It's just adding another additional.
Help.
And I do believe that.
Set of eyes at Evlith High School.
Okay, I got it.
SRO, I believe, can pop in over at the, all the schools, correct?
It can, but it is not a police officer in Evlith.
Right.
They just, there's some limitations on.
So it's a jurisdictional.
Got it.
The contract says certain building.
If you tell me to add a para, you're, you're equalizing the situation.
Okay.
So.
I see the, I see the Gilbert PD at Laurentian all the time. She's there to, just to be with the kids and greet.
Yeah, they've always done that.
Two, three times a week, whatever. I see her all the time.
Yeah, they've always done that.
Which I think is great.
Yeah, me too.
Any, any more discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye by going forward with hiring a para floater for the Evlith campus. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, 10.
Two. I'll make a motion.
What's that? Brandy? Did you say something?
I made a motion.
I made, I made the motion for the Wisconsin Superior.
Motion by Reardon, support by.
Brandy.
I'll just say, I'll just say Lauder.
I gotta be fast quicker.
Yeah. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 10, 12, 10, 3, consider approval of MOU between Fond du Lac College and Rockridge Public[1440.66]